Yeah.
Yeah.
The action of one person's budget.
We're short. One board member will wait just a moment because I think she will appear. And we can get started.
One of the things I'm doing, Texas, is trying to lay the groundwork for that.
I wanted to ask you for that.
Right.
Training, data proceeding, operating staff. So I find this all important.
All right. I think I'll just go ahead and get started because we are on a very tight schedule.
I'll try to save you some time and keep it very fast.
That sounds good. Yes, and I have a few welcoming remarks I'm supposed to make just to say welcome everybody who's here and online. This is our first workshop session of the FY 2025 budget cycle. I'm Board Chair Libby Garvey. Just for the record, Vice Chair Karen Tonas, Texas Karen Tonas is with us, and members Matt DeFrante, Susan Cunningham, and Maureen Coffey. Welcome all. So this is our, this is a little unusual for our workshop session. This is Courts and Constitutional Officers. It's a little bit like speed dating. We have about 15 minutes per, sorta, or less, kind of, hopefully some time for a few questions. And then I have to remind everybody, we really don't have authority over y'all. You're elected or appointed, so we don't like, you know, so we have, we cooperate, we work together, but it's not like your budgets are not to us the same way our department budgets are to us.
They still are budgets.
They are your budget, but they're not, yes, yes, yes. We have some authority, but officially we don't tell the clerk of the court what to do. So, Mr. Clerk, Paul Ferguson, take it away.
That is, that is a nice lead in because probably close to half of my budget is revenues that comes from the state. Nevertheless, when I started this job 17 years ago, it was more like two-thirds came from the state and one-third from the Commonwealth, one-third from the locality, but times have changed. And it's consistent with really other Northern Virginia jurisdictions.
Yeah.
So you were just talking about being on a tight timeframe. I would try to move quickly. Our mission statement hasn't changed over the years, basically to provide access to justice for the public and legal community. Next slide, please. I've come to you in past years saying how our numbers are increasing greatly.
Lee, ah, microphone. Thank you. It used to be when I was here, there was a little green light that was on that would let you know. Now it's just sort of.
We keep changing microphones. It's just to keep you on your toes. It's okay.
Right. Well, anyway, my apologies for not having the microphone on.
I should have noticed.
So really, our filings and our workload is steady for the most part. Civil cases, you know, it's just, just about steady. Criminal cases, a very slight uptick, but nothing significant. Land records is the big decline, and that is a negative for county government and for revenues. So please don't shoot the messenger on this. It has to do with interest rates and inventories being low as far as properties on the market. So we have had a decrease in land records transactions, as you can see. But if for some reason, interest rates were to go down a point or two, I really think you would see a huge uptick because I think there's a lot of people that are waiting to refinance it possibly.
Call that pent-up demand. Yeah.
Yes, yes. So next slide, please. So I'm asking you not to cut my land records budget because.
Always good to get to the point. Yes.
Equity is important to the board. It's important to the county. It's important to our office. The biggest challenges we face are people that come in and they need an attorney, and we can't be their attorney, but we try to give them all the resources that we possibly can. If they income qualify, we can take them, refer them to legal aid. If not, there's state bar websites, access to justice websites that we can refer them to. That being said, when you look at our counterparts in Fairfax, they run a tremendous operation out of the library assisting self-represented litigants. And unfortunately, our Bar Association in Arlington just has had diminished resources over the years when it compares with the Fairfax Bar Association.
So it's a bar, so it's like not the Fairfax government. It's an association.
Well, the government kind of helps. It's a, it's a partnership. There are, you know, county librarians that are, that are in that office. So over the, over the next year, if any of you have a chance to take a look at that, as well as take a tour of our library, it used to be that the Arlington County Bar Association had two to three staff working, and that would help our library staff person in there. They now have zero, and they've had zero for the last few years. So we only have one staff person, and so we are not able to open the library full hours. And that's an access to justice and an equity issue that I just want to flag for you. We keep the library open from nine to three daily, but if she is sick or on vacation, I don't really have a backup, and I'd like to have another staff person there. I'm trying to lay the groundwork for that for next year. I know this is not the year to ask. That's been made clear. We try to have staff that speak multi languages, especially Spanish. There's probably, probably half the office, I would say, speaks Spanish fluently. And then there's other languages that are spoken also. We do have court interpreters that can assist us also. Next slide, please. We were talking before we started about the budget cuts. What that means to the clerk's offices, we'll have less money to scan in documents. The downside to this is that we, one, if you have an older file that you're trying to find, sometimes pages can go missing somehow. You know, sometimes the whole file can go missing. So it's really important to scan them in. Everything from 2013 on has been scanned in. So any new current case, there's no, no risk of not locating the file. There's also a number of historical documents that we're working on scanning in, so we'll just have to do less of that. There's significant renovations going on at the courthouse. We're moving the juvenile courts from the fourth floor to the 11th floor. The 11th floor used to be occupied by the Circuit Court, so we use that space. So I've got a crunch as far as where I'm going to put the ballots that are going to come in from the 2024 election, the presidential elections, when we have the largest number of ballots, obviously. So I haven't quite figured out where I'm going to put those. I'm supposed to keep them onsite, not an off-site access. So I know the county could help me if I was going to try to do outside storage. So anyway, if I had more money to scan, I could free up places where file currently paper, old paper files are, and that would enable me to have more space. So that's the long-term goal is to continue to scan when there's funding available. Next slide. So I've, I've just pretty much covered that. Go back to the previous slide, please. I wanted to say something about that. I wanted to thank the board and the county for the HR study that resulted in an increase in salaries to many employees in the clerk's office, probably county-wide. So if you look at those numbers, that eases the sting of the proposed cuts in the management or his budget, and that the biggest problem that we've had in the clerk's office is vacancies and maintaining staff. And I really feel that just this change that's been made with the increase, it's giving me the feeling that, that employees are going to stay longer. So we'll see how that goes. Next slide. Already covered that one. Let's go to the next slide. All right. This is sort of in the out years. I, well, I also need to thank the board and the county for the new land record system that's being funded. We're transitioning over. We're still with the old system, but this will allow our offices in clerk's office and the county offices that needs to transact with land records to function better. It will also be more accessible for the public. So that's going to be a little bit more expensive, but not that much more. So there's lower upfront costs, but higher maintenance costs because it's cloud-based. I talked about the sixth and the 11th floor and the degradation, degradation of files. So let's go to the next slide. I mentioned the library staff, which I'm really hoping that the manager will consider funding in next year's budget.
Okay.
Glad to take questions.
Thank you.
I didn't go as quickly as I sort of said I would.
Not too bad. Not too bad. Questions for our clerk? And it looks like first of the box, Mr. DeFrante.
One and only one. Could you just, you mentioned one-third, the balance that is, and I don't know off the top of my head, the balance between state-funded and what we fund. Can you just share that again? I think it's related to slide.
Really, in some ways, courts should be 100% a state function. But in Northern Virginia, we want to have a higher standard than average. We're a world-class government, so not just in Arlington, but you'll see all the courts in Northern Virginia enhance funding to the courts. Obviously, land records is important to you, too. Back in 2009, Mr. DeFrante, the state made a money grab from urban localities is the best way to put it. The state has done that in the past. And it used to be that basically, we got after the minimum, the state gives you a certain amount of money. After that's paid back, then there's a fee-splitting arrangement that was two-thirds to the locality, one-third to the state. And in 2009, they just decided, let's flip those numbers. Let's make it two-thirds to the state and one-third to the localities.
Thank you very much.
And of course, most jurisdictions in Virginia don't ever pay back the initial funding to the, to the state. So it was only the urban jurisdictions. There's 22 of them. The state basically grabbed a bunch of money.
Okay.
And so that was a year where localities in Northern Virginia, Virginia Beach, large localities, really had to pick up the slack for what the state didn't do. That was fortunately a long time ago.
Got it. Thank you.
Ms. Cunningham.
Two questions. I think one is for the extra staffing needs that you mentioned alluding to in future years. Is there anything that, that volunteers could help you with if we were to get more support in your office for libraries or anything like that?
Maybe. They wouldn't, if there's somewhat of a specialty as far as the law goes, but sure, I'm interested. I have a friend who, there are a couple of people who I know, they're not volunteers, but they're retirees from the county government system, and they work, one works as a jail librarian.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So something like that could help. I know I've mentioned it to Diane Krech, and she's keeping her eyes open for me. But so, Ms. Cunningham, if you have, if you have, if you have someone that wants to work in a law library.
Yeah. I mean, we have volunteer at Arlington that's happy to post anything if you happen to have it. So just asking that.
Thank you. Great idea. If you find someone for me, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah. And then second one is, how do you measure service levels? So I think there's sort of, you know, counts of how many cases and that sort of thing. What, what are the metrics? And how do we know that you're amazing?
We, we measure how many people decide to file in our court. I like to think that because of the technology funding that, that the county has invested in the Arlington Court in the past, that more people file civil cases when they have choice of venues because the e-filing system is the best in Northern Virginia. That may not always be the case in future years, and that could result in our statistics going down. So I take pride in the, the civil numbers that were going up over the years. Criminal cases, we don't want those to go up. So, you know, that, those have been relatively steady. I said a slight intake. Land, you know, I can't, I can't do anything to incentivize the land records transactions. It's sort of market-based, but I feel that we were able to do what we could in the civil section.
Great.
So probate people, I don't control that, obviously, either.
Thank you. Out of your control. Yeah. Other questions? We are actually at your time, sort of a lot, that very short period of time. So, Mr. Ferguson, thank you for coming in. It's good to see you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess you could say saved by the bell, right?
No, I only have a gavel, but a bell is a good idea. I kind of like that idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And next up, we have our Commissioner of the Revenue, who's been in office all of, let's see, January for two months, I think?
Two months and two days.
And two days. Well, hey, yeah. Welcome.
Thank you.
You've been to this table before, but in a, with a different hat on.
I know. Hold on one second. And Bill is going to join me.
Okay, great. Do you want to introduce the folks who are with you? Push the button, and then when it comes up, Brett, you're on. Yeah.
There we go. All right. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Greatly appreciated. I have Bill Burgess and Ray Miller with me, both of my deputies, one with our legal counsel and one with our vehicle personal property.
Great.
All right. We'll get this party started. Okay, so next slide, please. So we did take some time to update our mission statement because we wanted to be a little bit more clear and concise. So Commissioner of Revenue, our office, our mission is to assess local taxes fully and fairly, serving the needs of our community and all of you here. Next slide, please. Hopefully, you can read this. I wanted to just take a moment to define our scope of work. So what you see here is, in the darker teal, is the Commissioner of Revenue and the six function areas that we specialize in: providing checks and balances and compliance, assessing all personal property with excluding real estate, providing the entry point for all businesses, and giving business licenses and assessing business tax, operating a DMV Select, and providing taxpayers assistance with their state income tax. You'll see in the lighter color, we partner and collaborate internally and externally. So these are all of our partners, and we have a few of them sitting in the audience today. So we want to thank you for your partnership. Next slide, please. We also wanted to just give you a little bit of perspective. This is currently the budget. Anything that is in a blue pie slice is what the Commissioner of Revenue assesses. So that includes your meals tax, your transient occupancy tax, your business professional occupation license, vehicle personal property, and that accounts for assessing 25% of county revenues. And our expenses are 0.4% of the current county budget. Next slide, please. So our achievements, and I'll go through them quickly because I know I don't have a lot of time here, but first and foremost, public access and service. As of March 1st, Friday, this past Friday, we are now open to the public five days a week, coming back fully from COVID. So I want to thank the team and thank everyone who has supported us in those efforts. We're also partnering and coordinating with our various partners to make sure that implement weather policies, et cetera, were aligned, so that folks come up to the second floor, they know both offices might be open or both offices might be closed, depending on the weather. We've been going through our paperless initiative. It is one-year-old now with a cost savings of $50,000, and also approximately 50% reduction in some of our paper-based processes, allowing people to actually focus on other things, specifically reporting and analytics. We've enhanced our compliance efforts through our Schedule C initiative, and we have seen about, our annual audit product, annual audit program generates about $3 million annually. Our canvassing initiative has also brought in 270 additional customers, which we wouldn't have had, and wouldn't have had business licenses, and we would not be assessing them otherwise. And then we also have been visiting our civic associations as well as 320 properties to make sure if you are living in Virginia, your car is registered in Virginia. We're also capitalizing on our office professionalism. And so if anyone came downstairs to the second floor during business tax season, you could see we have a new counter space, which is wonderful. We have self-service kiosks, and there's actually, the kiosks are shadowed, so we can actually have customers log into their cap accounts, and we can see what they're doing to help them with their transactions. Next slide, please. So we are pretty much at a steady state in regards to our budget. I know Paul talked a lot about the comp board and state funding. Our state funding is at about $572,000. So it has been increasing throughout the years due to advocacy. But if we get our deputies certified, potentially each deputy could bring in an additional 9.3% annually to the county. So we will be looking at certifying and training up our deputies. Next slide, please. So future, not 2025, but things to think about for 2026 and beyond. Access to our pricing guide, J.D. Power continues to go up. Costs continue to rise. We are working with the Commissioner of Revenue Association, as well as other potential suppliers and vendors, to see if this is something we can mitigate. But it's going to take about two years to figure that situation out. I did mention training and certifications. We will make sure we have money to account for travel and for training budget, so we can bring in an additional 9.3%. And then retention and recruiting, I think this is a challenge anywhere you look nowadays, but we would really like to be focusing on our audit folks. Each auditor brings in about $855,000, and so they pay for themselves. And we are losing potentially to other jurisdictions. So we are working with HR to make sure we are competitive. Next slide, please. As you can see, we have many challenges that we're focusing on, but we always want to keep our lens of equity in order to make sure we inform, educate, empower, and anticipate the needs of our customers through our community and business engagement, access to information in all forms, and accessibility. Next slide, please. So upcoming in programs and initiatives, we will, as you can see, a lot of folks may not know what our office does, and it is our job to make sure they understand what our office does in regards to other offices. So we will be starting education campaign. If you're on LinkedIn, Twitter, X, Instagram, Facebook, look for us, please, R-L-V-A-C-O-R. Our paperless initiative continues. In the lens of equity, we still need to account for paper as well. Not everyone has a computer, and that's why the self-service kiosks are wonderful. And we're trying to take a more proactive approach to compliance, getting out there, doing the business field trips, talking to the civic associations, trying to get in front, so we would not have to statutory or estimated assess. And then again, we continue with our office professionalization. We are working with our partners in the Treasuries Office on a major IT system upgrade, and in the coming, what, two years? So stay tuned for more. Next slide, please. And that's all I've got.
That's great. That's a lot for two months and two days.
I thank these kind folks here.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's great. Thank you, colleagues. Questions for our Commissioner of Revenue, Mr. Karen Tonas?
Thank you. Two questions packaged. So Schedule C initiative, that's a 1040 for laypeople.
Yes, thank you. The notes were in the slide, but yes, thank you.
So how does this work? So is that a commercial service that you buy, or is that an IRS service, or how do you?
So the forms come through the IRS, through the state. And so, for instance, this past year, we got 22,354 Schedule Cs. And we had to whittle that down and see how many of those folks actually made over $100,000, because those are the folks we really want to make sure they have business licenses. And then out of the folks that did not, we want to have a program in the future to make sure they understand that since they have a Schedule C, they need to make sure that they have a business license in Arlington.
That, that means that you will, you will find out who these people are or these businesses are, and then you will try to get them into compliance, et cetera. This is a lot of work.
It is a lot of work. Our team is working incredibly hard on this, and we could always use more manpower. We also are looking to automate more of these systems to make it more efficient, but it is a lot of work, to your point.
Okay. Second thing, that's more of a remark. In your critical measure, since fiscal year 2020, everything is at 100%, which is the, everything, I like literally the entire matrix. So you walk on water?
I know, right? To your point, we are looking.
Probably needs to be.
We actually are looking to do more qualitative measures versus quantitative measures in the future. So I can't bring those to you today, but if you have ideas on some you'd like to see, I'd like to hear about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Coffey.
Yeah, I think, oh, probably not close enough there. Looking at the performance measures, I think two of the things that jump out to me as important to all of us, but that I'm not seeing a performance metric on, is the DMV Select. You know, I would love to know how many people are using it here, how many, what services are they accessing, things like that.
So in regards to services.
Yeah.
I don't have a slide on it, but hold on, I have a piece of paper for you here. I thought I put it back here. Aha. And this doesn't tell the story that I want to tell, so I would love to actually bring you guys down for a tour. But DMV Select pretty much does all services minus licenses and a few other things. I got one more in here, Susan.
Oh, good. We can share.
Okay, thank you. As you can imagine, during COVID, we had limited customers. And now that we are back to being open five days a week, that has been increasing. There also is an opportunity in the future to partner with DMV where they bring in kind of like a satellite van, where you can do licenses on certain days, which would also bring more folks. But what we love about DMV Select, it is one-stop shopping. So a lot of folks that want to come in, they don't want a lot to wait. They may actually have mobility challenges. And so it's a perfect place for them to do their title, their registration, as well as their vehicle property, personal property registration. So we make sure they're not one of the folks that we have to find with our license plate reader later on. But I would love to provide you with more data and a tour as well.
Yeah, absolutely. And then I think the, the second thing that you highlighted is really important and is working well for the county is the audit functions. And I think maybe including in the future some metrics on how many audits, what percentage of business, you know, I, I'm not sure what the right metrics are, but I think that that's just as we look forward and as you consider, do we need to add more audit function, having some sort of metric around that would be really helpful.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I think your office might pay for itself.
Yeah. That's our, that's what we try to do.
Ms. Coffey, anything else? Okay. Ms. Cunningham.
Two questions. One is the estimated non-compliance rates. Do we have that for each of our taxes?
So we do have our non-compliance, well, statutory assessments. So we have 88% of folks provide their assessments without us having to remind them. But then we have close to 12% that are statutory annually, and that has stayed at that level probably for the past.
I like literally the entire matrix. So you walk on water.
I know, right? To your point, we are looking.
Probably needs to be.
We actually are looking to do more qualitative measures versus quantitative measures in the future. So I can't bring those to you today, but if you have ideas on some you'd like to see, I'd like to hear about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Coffey?
Yeah, I think, oh, probably not close enough there. Looking at the performance measures, I think two of the things that jump out to me as important to all of us, but that I'm not seeing a performance metric on, is the DMV Select. You know, I would love to know how many people are using it here? How many, what services are they accessing, things like that?
So in regards to services?
Yeah.
I don't have a slide on it, but hold on, I have a piece of paper for you here. I thought I put it back here. Aha! And this doesn't tell the story that I want to tell. So I would love to actually bring you guys down for a tour. But DMV Select pretty much does all services minus licenses and a few other things. I got one more in here, Susan.
Oh, good. We can share.
Okay, thank you. As you can imagine, during COVID, we had limited customers. And now that we are back to being open five days a week, that has been increasing.
Yeah.
There also is an opportunity in the future to partner with DMV where they bring in kind of like a satellite van where you can do licenses on certain days, which would also bring more folks. But what we love about DMV Select, it is one-stop shopping. So a lot of folks that want to come in, they don't want a lot to wait. They may actually have mobility challenges. And so it's a perfect place for them to do their title, their registration, as well as their vehicle property, personal property registration. So we make sure they're not one of the folks that we have to find with our license plate reader later on. But I would love to provide you with more data and a tour as well.
Yeah, absolutely. And then I think the second thing that you highlighted is really important and is working well for the county is the audit functions. And I think maybe including in the future some metrics on how many audits, what percentage of business, you know, I'm not sure what the right metrics are. But I think that that's just as we look forward and as you consider, do we need to add more audit function? Having some sort of metric around that would be really helpful.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I think your office might pay for itself.
Yeah, that's what we try to do.
Ms. Coffey, anything else? Okay. Ms. Cunningham?
Two questions. One is the estimated noncompliance rates. Do we have that for each of our taxes?
So we do have our noncompliance, well, statutory assessments. So we have 88% of folks provide their assessments without us having to remind them. But then we have close to 12% that are statutory annually. And that has stayed at that level probably for the past four or five years. So that is something that we do want to look into as we look to be more proactive.
And that's across all categories? Okay. Second question is, what coordination do you have with A.D. and BizLaunch on identifying?
We're actually meeting with them in two weeks. So we have been doing some work with them, especially through the pandemic with the grants program. But now that we're moving forward, we want to make sure based upon the information we can provide, based upon the Code of Virginia, that we're helping them, we're helping the businesses because we are the entry point. So stay tuned. I'll let you know how the meeting goes.
Mr. DiFranti?
Thank you. It's more comment, and I'm getting better at budgets, I think. So I've already sent a note to make sure this happens. So on Ms. Cunningham's question regarding the business tangibles, I'd like to sort of sit and try and do a two-by-two conversation with you in June or July after the CIP on that, just to work this and to try and understand it and see if we can make progress. And then on the license plate readers, having lived in a multifamily building, you're not from Maryland if you've been living in my building for two years. And this is a hard problem to solve. Don't want to be too, but that's also a conversation that in that two-by-two, I'd love to follow up on.
Absolutely.
And I know it's not easy, and I know COVID changed it. And we don't want to, you know, if you just moved in two months ago, we don't want to be. But there are folks who are, live in Virginia, who, whose residence is a state of mind in Virginia and not.
Yeah. And that actually brings up a point. Through our educational campaign, we also want to partner with the Welcome to Arlington program that the communications folks here have been doing. So we have been meeting with Bryna and her team. We have some action items. Carla and I have been meeting with her. So that is, that's definitely an area we want to focus on as well.
Great. Thank you.
That's great. All right. Thank you. Well, it's great to see what you've done in two months and two days. And I expect, I'm not going to be here at this table, but I expect it's going to be, you know, a lot more when you come back next year. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Really appreciate the good work. Thank you.
Gentlemen?
All right. Five days a week, finally. Yes. Thank you. All right. Then next up is our Treasurer, Ms. DeLaPava. I am just fine. Good afternoon.
I have with me today Kim Rocker, my chief deputy, and Linda Ross, who is my Assistant Deputy for Administration.
Here we are. I think you need to push the button so the red, you got it. Yeah, good again. See that red?
There we go.
Yep.
Ms. Cowan, how are you? It's so nice to see you here.
All of our financial people here. This is great.
So I'll be quick. The mission, actually, that's kind of a lie. I will try to be quick. The mission of the Treasurer, as defined in the Constitution, is to bill and receive, collect, safeguard, and disperse county funds. And the process starts with billing. In my office, we are responsible for a number of high-volume automated transactions that require sophisticated systems to process. Part of my job is to make sure that those systems are not inadvertently impacted by changes in other systems that we interface with. As you can see on our slide, our.
I think we need to get the slides up.
Yeah.
Ms. Jacobs, can you help with that?
As you can't see on our slides.
But we will soon.
Our payment portal and our telephone systems are critical to our operations. Our payment portal is CAP. And are we up? One more? Are critical, they're critical to our operations and not just because of volume. They're critical because they're customer-facing. And I know that technology needs improvements and upgrades. But these are very high risk. And you will hear in the remainder of this presentation that our payment portal is going, going to go through an upgrade through our tax system. And our telephone systems are also going through an upgrade, which brings opportunity, but also a lot of risk. After billing comes payments. And our busiest time for receiving payments is the two weeks leading up to the October 5th tax deadline, which we fondly refer to as crunch. In-person payments have been going down for years. And that decline is accelerating because of technological advances, because of changing demographics, and because of things like a pandemic. So I'm always really surprised at how many people still want to come in and pay their taxes. During the pandemic, we, it became very clear that minimizing crowds was a very good thing. So we tried to spread out our in-person payments. And we started satellite offices, which also have the side benefit of allowing customers to pay their taxes from their own neighborhood. And it also provides a safe way to pay for people that want to pay by check but no longer trust the United States mail service. Our goal is to get to 50% of our in-person transactions done through our satellites. We are a long way from that, but we will keep trying through education and marketing. What we don't receive, we must collect. And in FY 2023, we collected about $40 million worth of delinquent debt. We expect to be in, at that same level in FY, in this current year. And that includes about a half a million dollars of delinquent debt owed to county departments, as well as $600,000 of delinquent court fines and fees that are owed to the state. Our enforcement actions include wage liens, bank liens, asset seizures, court actions, and sometimes friendly visits to delinquent businesses. But our, our big problem this year is skyrocketing delinquencies. As you might recall from my talk last fall, we saw right after the deadline, the October 5th deadline in 2022, dramatically higher car tax delinquencies, which had remained low through the pandemic. They reached almost $10 million, which we have never seen delinquencies that high. So imagine our surprise when this year they came in $1 million higher than that. So we've got our hands full right now on, just on collections of delinquent taxes. Anyway, once the, once the money has been collected, it's my job to make sure that the county's funds are invested safely and we disperse them as directed by the local governing body. Interest rates started to peak in March of 2022. And as you can see from this slide, interest income on county funds reflected that increase in, in interest rates. It continues this year to increase. Interest incoming continues to increase this year because investments that were made in the low-interest rate environment begin to mature. And now we can invest them in the higher, in the higher rate market. We do believe, though, that interest rates have peaked and they will start coming down in FY '25. In addition to those core functions, special projects have really stretched our resources. Starting with the enterprise payment system, which my chief deputy will give you more details about the rollout. But suffice it to say that with the enterprise payment system, the number and the depth and breadth of who we interface with in the county is demonstrated. And we are working with agencies all over the county to give them the option of online payments. We also have the stormwater utility fee rolling out, which changed not only our, our real estate bill completely, but it also completely changed our real estate billing, tax, tax billing process altogether. The Prism Plus upgrade, you can imagine, I've used a lot of resources from my office. The county telephone migration project will have a major impact on our call centers and our customers. And it'll also impact just general collection efforts. My staff make a minimum of 20,000 to 30,000 outbound calls to collect delinquent taxes. So this telephone system upgrade, while maybe a great opportunity, is also a very risky one for, for my office. And finally, we did a banking RFP for banking, general banking services, lockbox services, and integrated payables. We hope to be able to make an award announcement soon. And now I will hand you over to Kim Rocker to talk about EPS.
Great. Thank you, Carla. Hopefully, I think everybody's familiar with CAP and hopefully uses it to manage and pay your tax accounts. It's very widely used throughout the county. But we had departments coming to us over time saying, and customers, actually, can we pay these, this bill that's due to the county in CAP? And unfortunately, we're limited and CAP can only service accounts that are handled in our tax collection system. So we partnered with DTS and have been working over the last couple of years to come up with a solution where other account types could be paid to the county online. So when we were at this table a year ago for our work session, we were just getting ready to roll this out. So we made a lot of progress in 2023. And we have eight payment types crossing multiple county departments that are in production now. You can see them listed on the screen. We've had about 1,800 transactions already, with some of those just rolling out in the last couple of months. So looking ahead, we are going to roll out three new payment types this month. The first will be the fire department inspection and permits. After that will be the police safety patrol camp registrations. And last, but certainly not least, will be CAP. And it's important to note that this will not replace CAP. CAP will still be the front end for payment, account management and initiating payments. But we're going to replace our third-party backend payment processor, who now processes our card payments. But this will also bring an enhancement to our customers where advanced payment methods will be available, like Venmo, PayPal, Apple Pay, and Google Pay. And then a little further down the road, in 2024, we will also be interfacing with Prism Plus. Through that upgrade, DMF is making available an AR module for small billings that departments can also use. And we'll take those payments through this portal. And then we will also start working on permit Arlington. They already take online payments, but it will be very similar to CAP where we'll just be replacing that backend payment processor. And then beyond that, we will just continue to go live with payment types as departments bring them to us.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. After many years of advocacy by the Treasurers Association of Virginia, in 2022, the legislature finally provided funding for treasurer's offices around the Commonwealth that had been cut in 2002. After this budget cycle, we anticipate that our comp board funding will actually be about $750,000, which is a 24% increase over two years ago. When the county asked us for budget cuts, we offered a vacant accountant for position, which should save the county about $159,000 a year. What is not on this slide is I also offered to do our, our paperless billing initiative. It's hard to estimate how many people will take us up on that. But we think the savings to the county will be approximately $20,000 a year in postage and, and paper. Our proposed budget for 2025 shows a modest increase in personnel and then increased revenue, the comp board funds, and also increased collection fees due to the higher delinquencies. Looking forward to next year, the big thing on the horizon is the upgrade to our tax system, ACE. And that's a year-long project that starts this month. While we're doing that, we will be in production support for Prism Plus, stormwater utility fee, telephone systems, and EPS. We will continue working on rolling out EPS. We will have, if our, if our banking RFP requires banking, any banking changes, we'll be in the middle of that, as well as testing, testing with the utilities department on their upgrade to their Kianta system. We will also be working with public schools on their Oracle upgrade and working with the police on the parking enforcement RFP. So I think we've got our hands full. As always, I appreciate your support of me personally and my office throughout the year. I really do appreciate it.
We appreciate your support, too. It keeps us running. All right. Questions for our Treasurer? Questions? Ms. Cunningham?
Can you say a little bit about our accounts receivable or accounts payable and kind of collections on that side? So when someone owes the county money, how, how is that managed? Is there, is it all in one system or are they spreadsheets? Are they?
So when the county owes, what's in our tax system, of course, is delinquent taxes. We also have MOUs with a lot of different agencies. And those collections are done when they give us accounts to collect. So we collect, we don't, for example, we don't collect utilities unless it's a final notice. The utilities department have a way better collection method than I could ever come up with. So, but on final notices, we will. We collect delinquent parking tickets, red light photo.
Ambulance bills.
Ambulance bills. And those are done when they provide us with delinquent accounts. We will send the notice and then unfortunately, if they call us, we can't answer anything about their ambulance bill and we have to send them back. But the point is that we've gotten someone's attention. And hopefully, we have, you know, we look for new addresses in case the address that was given was incorrect, things like that.
Gotcha. Great. And then one other question on cash management and sort of drawdown of capital. I think that you highlighted that we have more, less cash on hand this year. Interest rates are better. Is, is the cash on hand a good thing or a bad thing in terms of, should we have that?
If you think about it, I think cash on hand, it's not necessarily a bad thing. When you, when you have, like in your CIP or you have money that will be spent during the year, we can invest those things and make money on that. Some of the more important functions are, for example, the state non-arbitrage SNAP, state non-arbitrage program. We, we put our bond proceeds there. And then when we spend the money, we can take it out of the SNAP program. But we spend first and, and withdraw later. Certainly speeding up those withdrawals would be a great thing. I have, I would not have access to how quickly we do that. But any, any monies that we can pull in from anywhere are, it would be better to invest them ourselves. Right now, if it's, if it stays, for example, in SNAP, it's a non-arbitrage program. They, they think that we haven't spent the money. And so any interest that we earn might soon bump up against the arbitrage limits for IRS. And then we'd have to give that money over. I don't think we've hit that. I mean, I think once since I've been here, we started to have to give back arbitrage money. But, but that's always a worry, right? So.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Coffey?
Yeah, on the enterprise payment system first, yay!
We've been talking about it a really long time.
With the integration with CAP, I just want to clarify. Will people be prompted for a new or? for a new or different login when they go to the actual payment site or is it still just one continuous system and it's just the processing that's different?
I think I know that answer, but I'm gonna let Kim Rocker answer.
No new login. They will just go from CAP, they'll be logged into CAP or they can even do it through our pay now functionality in CAP. They don't have to be logged in. But as soon as they choose that payment and electronic check will still be paid within CAP, but it's these card and advanced payment methods, once they go over to that payment site, all of their account information follows them. They'll put in their name, email address and their payment information.
Good, okay. Um, and a related question, you know, I know you have your list for the rest of 2024 in terms of what additional functionalities will be added. Um, and maybe this is a question for Michelle and, and the broader county, but do we have, are we being proactive in developing a list or a plan of the next things in the long term that we want to integrate and migrate over?
That is, can you hear me?
Yes, you're right. Um, I was having the same problem with Paul. Um, that is in the CIP process. Um, and so I think you'll see there's a whole section on technology. We'll talk about it as Pago. Um, we have moved things around, to be honest, when Prism became the top priority, given the, like, almost 20-year-old age of that system and the, the risks that, you know, Carla mentioned of on our side, not paying payroll on time or having that fail or vendor payments. We moved that up and moved some things back. But I think we also totally, to what Carla said, CAP is super duper important. As it's, I mean, that is like whenever most front-facing systems, that's how we get cash in. So I think, I think we've tried to, to work with Carla to make sure that, you know, we're recognizing the, the priority of, of what she does in comparison to some of the other things, systems, if you know what I mean? Uh, we're not always perfect and then we're sometimes stuck with outside vendors, if you will, right? Because so many of our systems are, you know, in the cloud or whatever, but.
Yeah.
Um, Carla's been an excellent partner, just never, always able to tell us, you better do this now, do that later. And I would say for the most part, we, we really try to listen. I hope he would agree with that for the most part.
Absolutely, I would agree with that. So when Carla comes raving, a red flag, you pay attention. That's great.
Well, nothing worse than a, a collection system going down because of another issue, right? I mean, that's just not the way it should be.
Thank you for the teamwork.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Karen Thomas?
Thank you. So, uh, that was a piece of, uh, a little bit disquieting news that delinquency is, quote unquote, skyrocketing. Uh, two questions on this. Number one is still on CAP, uh, since we are, you know, renewing the systems, doing a lot of work there, is that a moment to integrate also more people to use CAP or to make a concentrated effort to, because I know that still a good, you know, uh, a good number of residents who could use CAP don't. Uh, now set aside the traditional problems of, you know, if somebody's of a certain age or so that have some, not affinity to technology, et cetera. But I still believe, do you say, do you see need of doing more?
Yes, absolutely. The more people on CAP, the better. I have started talking to people that come in the office, that walk by me on the street in the cookie aisle at the Safeway. Um, anybody I can get my hands on, um, that if you could, if you don't have to, if you don't feel comfortable with online payments, that's fine, but get your notices and your reminders through CAP, um, because most people do have a cell phone. And, um, that relieves us of a problem with the United States Postal Service, which you know is, is terrible and...
Very reliable. In two weeks, you get a, a, a letter from, from Arlington to...
Come down to my office. I have a letter that we got back from the post office, undeliverable, and this was as far back as 2014. It was delivered to us on December 12th, 2014. And I opened it up. I, it was undelivered, it was return mail. I opened it up, it was a 2002 tax bill. I still have it. So it was 12 years late. So I think that, uh, not to bash a, a federal agency, but, um...
So it's, it's an all but goldy question. Should we think about incentivizing participation in CAP?
Hmm, how would you, am I gonna get budget funding for incentivizing CAP?
Make a proposal.
If, if we can see the benefits of that, if we can see the benefits of that, remember, it is with, with your office that we had the discussion about the D-calls and how, you know, not very contemporary it was to, to chase D-calls and spend all that money for so little dividend. So this is exactly the same question.
Okay, okay.
Okay. The second thing is, uh, TAP loans. So, uh, interest rates are high, people need TAP loans to, sometimes to, uh, to finance their tax bills. Uh, I see that your TAP loans are now half, what the, the estimate is half of what was fiscal year 2024. So, uh, should we brace for a challenge there?
No, it, it, it feels like our TAP loans have doubled in, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah. If you, yeah. TAP loans are wildly popular right now. Um, one of the problems we have is 10% of the people that get a TAP loan default. That is an awful lot of time and resources for people that default on those, those loans. Um, we make it an absolute priority to go and collect those first because we gave people the opportunity to be able to, um, pay, make those payments over time. Um, we are working with our own systems to try to mitigate some of the problems we see, making sure we do, you know, making sure we check that the bank account is accurate. Some of these things default after the first month, which is really disheartening. Um, but we have never seen a higher usage of, of TAP. Um, because we're used to, we're used to the 80 and 88 and the fact that we had 190 last year tells you something. Okay.
Okay. All right.
Uh, I have a couple of questions more about this, we'll, we'll deal with them.
For another time. That's, thank you, thank you, thank you. Mr. DiFrante?
Thank you. Uh, question on the delinquencies. Notice that, uh, the, you mentioned your concern. Real estate taxes have slightly, at least what we have in terms of delinquencies from fiscal '22 to '23, went from 13 to 9 million. Do you have any sense of the balance residential and commercial in that or no?
Not off the top of my head, but I could give that to you.
Okay. That, I'd be curious on that and any other big picture thoughts that we should be, you think we should be aware of that you haven't already covered on delinquencies?
I will say this about, yeah, uh, I will say this about real estate tax delinquencies. During the pandemic, they really skyrocketed and those were mostly, um, more commercial buildings and hotels. Hotels got hit really, really hard. So real estate has come back to kind of pre-pandemic levels. It, personal, uh, business tangible, the same thing, that they went through a real uptick during the pandemic and now are back to lower than, um, pre-pandemic levels. Um, it, it's the car taxes, um, that are really a problem right now. And I think that's why you see, uh, Governor Yonkin start talking about them because people are really upset. And it started with an increase in the values and you tried to address that. Um, it, it, a lot, I think a lot of people did buy new cars. They went out and bought new cars and I'm, I'm working with the new commissioner of revenue to kind of educate people on what that new car really costs. Um, you know, three quarters of our, our delinquencies in general are for car taxes and they're really hard to track down. Um, they move around and, um, so we, we keep trying. Um, but I think that, you know, car taxes, the PPTR, the personal property tax relief, um, has stayed steady since 2005 and car taxes are doing nothing but going up and are massively more expensive than they were in 2005. So people are starting to feel the pinch again and it's a lot.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll ask you some questions at another time.
Absolutely. I'm sorry.
No, 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 this has been a great discussion. Thank you very much. Thank you for all you do. I like this idea of incentives. At least lollipops or something, you know?
Well, we do give out lollipops.
Well, there you go.
But only if you pay your taxes, delinquent taxes.
Well, now you have to have a CAP account too.
All right, go.
Thank you. All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. Next we have our Commonwealth's attorney.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna bump everything.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Right, Stigana Taffiti, take it away. Uh, thank you Chair Garvey, uh, thank you members of the board. Uh, Alicia, thank you very much for all of your support for our office and for advancing the slides for me. So, um, uh, I am Prisa Tegana Taffiti and I'm the Commonwealth's attorney for Arlington County in the, the City of Falls Church. Uh, if you could go to the next slide, please. This is a picture of some of our staff. We are 19 attorneys, six victim witness specialists, eight paralegals, three administrative personnel, two IT and litigation support specialists, an office administrator, um, Keisha who's here with me, and a director of diversion and restorative justice. Uh, and I'm gonna say a little bit more about her, uh, role later on today, um, but it is a unique role. On a daily basis, we staff between five and nine courtrooms. Uh, we litigate bond motions, we put on trials, we review competency motions, uh, we litigate expungement, uh, applications, we litigate red flag laws, we litigate probation violations, um, and we do this in adult and juvenile cases, among other things, uh, including things like concealed carry permits and about 250 pages of statutory code that covers all of our duties. Uh, we are hard at work ensuring that we focus on prosecuting serious cases, using diversion to prevent future crimes and the effective handling of court dockets and adopting evidence-based policies to promote both fairness and safety. Next slide, please. So we have a holistic view of prosecution that incorporates more than just prosecuting and convictions. We focus on victim well-being, community well-being, fairness and justice in past, present and future cases. So in terms of prosecuting crime, we focus on serious crimes that jeopardize the safety and well-being of the community. We hold people accountable for car thefts, carjackings, serious assaults, rape, homicide, drugs, larcenies, and we divert cases where we can to allow for rehabilitation and treatment of substance use disorder and mental health, uh, uh, mental illness. Uh, for working for justice, we are responsible for protecting victims, the accused and the community. We empower victims through innovative restorative justice practices and a prosecution model that really focuses on victims' needs and putting them first, the constitutional rights of defendants and building community trust. And I'll talk a little bit more about that as we move along. And fighting for reform is all about reimagining a legal system that has a focus on equity as the county has prioritized and doing a work, uh, the work in a way that recognizes that we have to repair some of the racial disparities and trust deficits between the government and, um, law enforcement and our office, uh, particularly with, uh, communities of color and immigrant communities. Next slide, please. So in terms of prosecuting crime, um, it's not the measure by which, uh, we should be measuring justice, uh, in terms of convictions, but, um, it is one way that's a little bit more than just counting cases, which I know that the budget narrative does and, um, you know, we can count cases in filings. But we also have a, an impressive record of success at trial. We have taken, if you look at the four years prior to 2020 and 2020 through 2023, you'll see that we have an 18% higher success rate of guilty verdicts from juries, uh, on, uh, the top charge in cases and then a 13% higher success rate on, uh, any other charge. And that's really important because we've done this while improving our discovery practices. So we've provided electronic discovery, we provide full discovery, um, and, uh, we also have done it in, with a very unique and nationally recognized, uh, policy against using peremptory strikes so that we can ensure that we don't have any kind of racial bias, um, whether it's explicit or implicit in the selection of our jurors. And so we've, uh, done two really innovative things and still have exceedingly high, uh, conviction rates, uh, at trials. Some of the cases where we've succeeded at trial are a recent case, um, with, uh, Mr. Basurto who was finding drunk women in Clarendon and sexually assaulting them. Uh, we also have another, uh, Mr. Kobol who was sexually assaulting underage girls, um, uh, sometimes girls that, uh, he was inducing to drink and sometimes girls that , uh, had, uh, mental or, um, intellectual disabilities. Um, and, you know, again, it's not the sole measure of justice, but we've also obtained guilty pleas in significant cases, including one, uh, that was just sentenced last week. Who was a caregiver of an elderly woman and was convicted of 14 counts of elder abuse, uh, for doing some pretty horrific things to, um, a 90-plus-year-old victim. And, but it also is measured in things that are intangible, like dozens of meetings over the course of a couple of years with a domestic violence victim who had called repeatedly and never wanted to testify and had, um, recanted a number of times and building trust with her slowly but surely so that eventually she would testify against her abuser and we would get a conviction in, in that kind of a case. Next slide, please. Uh, in terms of building, uh, trust and, uh, working for justice, uh, we take that to be about figuring out what kind of cases to pursue and how, like dismissing a case where a domestic violence victim, again, different one, um, was, ended up being a defendant because, uh, she engaged in self-defense and her abuser called the police on her and she was the one who ended up being arrested. It's also about making sure that we're not separating families by allowing extreme collateral consequences, like people losing their immigration status or their DACA status, um, and allowing, uh, you know, making sure we don't allow someone to get deported to a country where they don't speak the language, where they don't have family and that sort of thing. It's about charging in a way that doesn't scare people out of, uh, trying to vindicate their constitutional rights, whether that's challenging searches or whether that's exercising their right to jury trial. It's about ensuring that kids are treated in the most rehabilitative way possible, um, both to ensure their safety and the safety of the community. Uh, and it's about reviewing past cases to ensure that we get it right. For example, uh, a few years ago, I was here and the Department of Forensic Science had sent us cases from a, an analyst named Danielle Hankerson who had, uh, engaged in some, uh, shady testimony, I, I would say. And, uh, we had 31 notices in those cases. We are still working through those cases. Um, I would have liked it to be faster, but because of staffing challenges, that's where we are. But I anticipated in the memo that I circulated to the, the county board that we would be receiving, uh, a number of notifications from much older cases, uh, what we call the Mary Jane Burton cases. And she, for decades, was an analyst with the Department of Forensic Science and, uh, we received our first notice, um, about her falsified testimony, um, about hair microscopy. We anticipate to seeing, uh, a number of cases where she, uh, has, has falsified results. And there's no way to know, standing here, how many there will be, but we know that there, there are going to be some. Um, and I worked on some of those cases myself, uh, before I became the Commonwealth's attorney, um, in, in when I was doing innocence work. Um, but, uh, working for justice, I said, is also about engaging with the community and, and building community trust. And that means attending countless community meetings, collaborating with, uh, Arlington Public Schools, with Arlington Police Department, uh, with the Falls Church Police Department, with Court Services Unit for prevention work, like, uh, a juvenile justice Jeopardy game that, uh, we collaborated to produce and is now being, uh, employed in schools. And it's also to address things like the fentanyl epidemic so that we can, uh, get in front of some of the problems that are going on and help educate administrators so that they'll be more likely to bring cases to us and report cases. Next slide, please. In terms of fighting for reform, um, uh, when I first came into office, we did a study with independent researchers that showed that black people were charged at a 52% higher rate of seriousness than white people, um, and that you were more likely to be convicted, sentenced to incarceration and have a longer period of probation if you were black or Hispanic than if you were white, even when you were controlling for other factors. Uh, we adopted recommendations, uh, like restrained use of mandatory minimums, uh, to address some of those problems. And we're in the process of working with those same researchers now to ensure that we are actually having the desired result, um, in, in reducing racial disparities. We also have collaborated twice now with the clerk of court, uh, several community-based organizations, pro bono defense counsel, the Coalition of... organizations, pro bono defense counsel, the Coalition of Black Clergy Arlington for Justice, and others in our first two, really, ever expungement clinics that were hosted at the Arlington Presbyterian Church. And in the first round, we had 39 people who were served and 19 petitions filed. In the most recent one, from last September, we had 58 people served and 38 petitions filed. And expungement is important because having a record of arrest that never ended in a conviction will adversely affect employment opportunities, housing opportunities, educational opportunities, and so it's important for people to know that that service is out there and then to have it provided biannually on a pro bono basis is significant. Collaborating with other organizations to ensure safety, we have worked to make sure that mentally ill don't end up in the criminal system and to address gun violence. I think the board is aware that we are working with Moms Demand Action and Brady United Against Gun Violence. We are a community and a country that is drowning in guns, and gun buybacks are not going to solve every problem that we have, but they will help focus a spotlight on gun safety. They will help us help remove some small number of guns that, you know, could harm children, be involved in suicides, or potential acts of violence. And it's a great opportunity to educate the community as well on the red flag laws so that they know, you know, who to contact. And we have three liaisons for that in our office. We also have national partnerships with reputable organizations to develop best practices in our restorative justice program and in our OAR diversion program, where we are dealing with some of the most, the restorative justice, some of the most harmed victims, and then with OAR, some of the people that keep coming back into the system and that the traditional methods of the, that the system uses have not worked. Next slide, please. Oh, I have only a couple of more.
Okay. Yeah, we just have a lot of people. Go ahead. Yeah, thank you, it's very interesting.
So we were asked for budget cuts, and since we were 98 personnel, there wasn't very much we could do, so we don't have a lot of fat without cutting operations. And there are a number of things that, if you go to the next slide, please, we have been asking for for a number of years, and that is a conviction review attorney that is full-time and permanent. The county has kindly provided twice temporary funds for that to deal with some of these past injustices. This is a very specialized area, and it's virtually impossible to find somebody to take those roles on a temporary basis. And we lost one person to an Innocence Project in another state, and we lost one person to parole and reentry work in the federal government. So if we had permanent funding that was reliable, it would be easier to hire this person. We also have been asking for an investigator so that we can investigate and prosecute wage theft, so that we can help provide service of subpoenas on cooperating witnesses, on victims who needed more discretion, and also to follow up on important cases where, you know, some of our law enforcement agencies like the ACPD are very willing to help and others are a little bit harder to wrangle. And I'm also seeking funding for restorative justice. I anticipate that about $250,000 a year would cover about 50 or more conferences. Currently, Restorative Arlington has six cases in progress and three in the referral process. And finally, some one-time monies for data because we have a very outdated case management system that does not produce data. You can't just plug in, you know, a question of, you know, why are, you know, how many cases are dismissed and why, and then get an answer. You have to go into each individual case and investigate why in order to really understand the workings of the office. Next slide, please. This is the last slide, I promise. Even fully staffed, our attorneys carry very heavy caseloads. The county was great in terms of doing the job studies and raising our attorney salaries closer to what market rates are, but we are still underpaying compared to Fairfax and Prince William County. And our attorneys have nearly twice the caseload of the attorneys in the City of Alexandria and in Prince William County. And the City of Alexandria actually has not rolled out body worn cameras even, so we have a double caseload, nearly double caseload with, without even full implementation on their part of body worn cameras. We have been doing great with staffing over the last eight months, and our big challenge is that we don't have space to put all of our staff. And I've long raised that there is an ethical problem with the shared space that we have and the fact that, you know, non-law enforcement and even the public and defendants can walk into our suite. And so right now, it's, you know, an ethical issue and an operations issue that we need to have solved. And I noticed that the board, I don't remember if it was Ms. Cunningham or Chair Garvey, asked about volunteers, and we, at any given time, have between four and 10 volunteers, from undergraduates to recent graduates to law students, and we actually don't have any place to put volunteers right now. And so that is also interfering with operations. And finally, we worked with Restorative Arlington to develop a program that is compatible with our office goals and responsive to our office needs, and that now needs to be funded. We were, both in terms of the money for the conferences, but the Department of Justice funded us for two years with a Director of Diversion Services and Restorative Justice, and that funding runs out in September 2024. That person has been integral in finding diversion services in other communities, and it's important to note that 65-plus percent of our court-involved population is actually not from Arlington, so DHS can't provide services, and many of our homegrown organizations can't provide services for those folks. Our Director of Restorative Justice and Diversion Services is the person who finds these, and develops the relationships with these programs in order to provide rehabilitative services for people who are coming into our court system from other communities. And then I would just like to close with two quick quotes, one from a person harmed who has recently engaged in restorative, in our Restorative Arlington program, and she says, "I believe our legal system is long overdue for a review of practices. Too often, consideration of the humans involved is lost in the focus on transactional and procedural rules and process. From my perspective, victims are not often made whole by a singular focus on punishment of offenders. I vote for holding individuals accountable, but also in bringing people together when possible. In my experience, two people facing each other creates a new and often healthier dynamic. Let me be sure to say that I not only believe in the rule of law, but I count on it. I believe that individuals are responsible for their actions, and consequences must be a requisite part of living in society. What I hope for is a system where action is swift, consequences are appropriate and humane, and outcomes bring people together and move us toward the goal of healing and provide motivation to amend lives." And then a quote from a person responsible from a recent conference, which is, "I needed the person to hurt, I hurt, to know why, to say this is why, and to say I'm so sorry."
Thank you. Thank you. All right, colleagues, questions for Mr. DeFranti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad to hear of the progress, difficult employment market across, but I'm glad to hear that progress and appreciate the presentation and the data and the specifics. I think this is going to be a question for the manager, and I'll try and figure out a way to do it, regarding the steps we need to take, we can take or could take to address the space on the floor. That's something I'll follow up, and I don't know through our process whether that's an email from me or a DMF, but we'll figure that one out. I'll also be following up on restorative, and I don't know, Ms. Cowan, if you have thoughts, happy to pause, but the restorative justice director, we did receive about 12 or so emails on that, and I would like to, I want to understand the specifics of the grant and the period, so I'll follow up separately. I know you sent a memo on that. And then the last question, mindful of our one-time and ongoing challenges, it sounds like the data entry personnel are, could be a one-time investment.
That's correct.
And so those are the three areas I particularly want to follow up. I do appreciate the letter and the memo and the information you've shared, and also the presentation with respect to the other needs that are there. I'll give pause, that's, I want to be efficient with time, but I want to also give you guys, if either of you wants to share any thoughts, but if you have thoughts on those or things you want to add, Mr. DeFranti, I wanted to give that chance.
I mean, the DOJ grant was a two-year period of funding, and it expires in September. We did receive an extension because the job market was challenging, and everybody understood that the job market was challenging, but it does expire in September of 2024.
So $87,000, the presentation number is?
Partial year.
To get through from September to the following June?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
I would love help just understanding and hoping to look ahead on sort of where the total costs of the office are going. So I know we're in a period of building and innovating, and over the last five years, it looks like the expenses have kind of gone about 48% up, and FTE, a lot of that, as you said, it's 98%, a lot of that is people. Is there a thought about where that lands five years from now and sort of what the trajectory would look like for the total size of the office?
Well, the size of the office has, the biggest impact on the size of the office has been the introduction of body worn cameras, and that has produced between 12,000 and 15,000 hours of video that we need to watch. And some of those, four of those FTE attorneys were mandated by the state based on the number of body worn cameras that were being implemented. And then there was a subsequent request when we realized that we were still, that it was not enough, and the folks that worked on the Governor's Task Force acknowledged that this 75 camera to one attorney ratio was just something that they made up without any actual data. And so based on the number of hours that we were watching and the work, I did ask for additional attorneys. What I learned in, because I'm a very hands-on manager, I went office to office and was asking people sort of what their workloads looked like, and when I realized that there was an inordinate amount of administrative work that was happening, I froze two attorney positions and turned them into three paralegal positions so that it would provide more support for the attorneys in terms of like going into the police system and pulling out the body worn cameras and tagging them properly, and that sort of thing. So every, everything that I've, that the office has received, and we're obviously extremely grateful for, but it's all been mandated by the county. So it's body worn cameras, it's the job studies, the sort of overall raises. There has not been a permanent investment in the county in the priorities that I'm requesting right now and have been for a number of years.
Great. And then the second question is, on the body worn cameras, if our police force were fully staffed, would that change the amount of work? When our police force is fully staffed, will it change the amount of work that?
In all likelihood, yes. And our work is constantly changing because False Church now has body worn cameras. I know that the Metropolitan Airport Authority is getting, has gotten body worn cameras. So all of our agency, our partner agencies, and we have more than just the two that are the obvious, are bringing body worn cameras online, so our workload is increasing as a result of those. And I anticipate, it depends on how the ACPD hires. If they hire more detectives, then that's fewer body warrants. If they hire more patrol, it's more body warrants.
Great. And then last question is, is there any technology investment that might mitigate some of that additional staggering workload, or are we not there yet?
I think, I think we've actually done everything that we can do on that. You know, we have, we pay for the automatic redaction, we pay for the automatic transcription. Those are not perfect tools, and so a human being still has to go over them and review them. And the ethical rules require us to be competent and like know our cases, so it can't just be paralegals watching them, we have to watch them, and then we have to produce them for defense attorneys as well. So I think we are at the limit of what is technologically out there.
Great, thank you.
Okay, sure. Ms. Coffey?
Yeah, I think mostly just a very quick comment that I think some of Matt's questions might be similar or close to the questions that I have, and so maybe we huddle after this so we can send unified questions.
All right, great. Mr. Karen Thomas, you okay? Do you have questions?
I had.
Good question.
Very, very, very similar questions to Mr. DeFranti and Ms. Coffey here. One thing I want to understand a little bit better, if you can elaborate very shortly. So the Director of Restorative Justice, this is a position that also works with other instances, like for example, AR, that is
Correct.
The main vehicle of providing services right now. So this is a linking pin
It is.
You know, between different restorative justices initiatives right now in Arlington.
It's not just restorative justice. It's, you know, she sits on the reentry council, she works with organizations in the District of Columbia, she works with organizations in Maryland, she works with organizations in other communities.
Critical, no doubt.
So it is a critical relationship, you know, being able to, you know, identify very early on. She sits in the, on the bond docket, for example, and makes recommendations to DHS and to defense attorneys and to our office about who to connect to which organizations to be a good fit, and she has a background as a chaplain and as a social worker. And so it's a much better judgment than what lawyers normally have for these sorts of things.
I perfectly understand, and I just wanted to make sure that we all understand what not all this function, it's not only the person that right now is doing a fantastic job, in my opinion.
And if I may, very quickly, we are unique, we were, as far as I know, we are the first prosecutor office to have this kind of a role, which is why the Department of Justice funded this.
We got a grant for the government.
And so it's a unique role for prosecutor offices.
And on the investigative support, so the investigator, this is not only about, this is not only about the types of crime that are difficult or, you know, very resource-intensive to investigate through the police department right now, it's also about, so for example, wage theft, which you mentioned. It's also about working with law enforcement agencies that are not the police department, like for example, Metropolitan Transit Police, et cetera, et cetera. That is always a challenge to
It is. It is, especially for, you know, finding witnesses that don't particularly want to be found, we call them reluctant witnesses, for serving and communicating with people who are cooperating and don't necessarily want everyone in their neighborhood to know that they, the police or the sheriff's office is showing up at their house. It's extremely effective for things like transporting evidence when we're working with police departments that are not within our sort of normal practice and work with our own Virginia Department of Forensic Science. So it is somebody that would play a lot of different roles that would help shore up cases for us.
Thank you. We'll have a lot to follow up on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, yeah.
And I would like to extend an invitation to all of the board members to come to our offices at any time. We're happy to tour, give you tours, we're happy to take you to court, and happy to help answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to our magistrate, Mr. Adam.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Bruce Adam. For those of you who haven't met me yet, I'm the Chief Magistrate for the 17th Judicial District of Virginia, which encompasses Arlington County and the City of Falls Church. I'd like to start off with, all right, this is our department mission. Basically, we, there's nothing, trying to think of the best way to put it, but we are the emergency room of the legal system. People come to us when they need assistance and protection. Law enforcement brings people who are under arrest or victims who are seeking redress from people who have wronged them. We issue, along with issuing pretty much all the warrants that get issued in our district or issued out of our office, we also issue all the emergency protective orders, emergency substantial risk orders, temporary detention orders. emergency protective orders, emergency substantial risk orders, temporary detention orders, emergency custody orders, both mental health and medical. There is, the entire staff is, I say eight point five, there's nine of us, one is part-time, only works on weekends because he has a job during the week. We're all attorneys. We have no support staff of any sort. We're all judicial officers who hold hearings. I said, we, for those of you who have already heard my, my shtick for lack of a better word, I apologize, but we operate twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We never close, even during disasters. When nine eleven happened, our office stayed open. When a blizzard happens, we find a way to get someone into the office. We have literally, at least since I have been a magistrate, our office has never closed. That's been several decades, dating myself there. We do serve a diverse population, both those who are coming to us for redress and those who are under arrest or being detained for mental health reasons. We have training in how to deal with people of various backgrounds and various statuses. We do have access to language line, but four of our, of the nine of us are fluent in Spanish, one is fluent in Arabic, and for everyone else, we have language line twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Next, please. We are, to put it simply, we are not a big revenue gainer for you guys and we don't cost a lot either.
Sounds good.
Next, please. These are the statistics. I would tell you that to take them with a certain amount of salt because the state computers only allow me to collect certain types of information. The retention system is meant for people in Richmond, not for me. So large categories of things that we do, I have no way of pulling out and showing to you. For instance, all the expungements in Arlington County, I do, I take them out of the magistrate system and those can, those are quite a few. Like before I came in here today, I did six. I probably do twenty-five to thirty a week. And, and many of the bond hearings, you see there, some people have to have multiple bond hearings because they come in intoxicated and, or they refuse to leave their cells or are too dangerous. So we have to hold an initial hearing, then we have to hold another one hours later. Sometimes if they appear to be mentally ill, we hold it, we hold a subsequent hearing after mental health has been able to interview them and give us information on them. So also many, many of the processes we do aren't on the computer. So I have no way of telling you how many happened last year and how many I'm going to, and the other thing is criminal and mental health matters, not something that you know how many are going to happen next year or next, or tomorrow or tonight. You know, figures vary from day to day, month to month, year to year. And if I could tell you how many, you know, crimes were going to happen, if I told you how many crimes were going to happen next year, I'd be blowing smoke at you. I can give you a good estimate since I've been doing this forever, but it's only an estimate. As you can see, during the pandemic, crime, at least crimes that were brought to our attention dropped. But I'm not sure that that is reflective of how many actual crimes happened during this period, but that's how many were actually discovered and prosecuted.
Thank you. How many slides do you have?
Pardon me?
How many slides do you have? Are we?
I will move more quickly.
I mean, it's, it's good to go, we have seen them and I, I just have, a whole group has come in. So, thank you.
Basically, as you know, we work on a shoestring and we do have times though when the equipment that we have wears out and we have to seek additional funds. We're in the process of getting estimates to replace the carpeting that was put down by my predecessor probably twenty-something years ago. And we're also, parts of our office have not been painted probably since the office opened in ninety-four. So I'm in the process of attempting to get it painted.
Seems like it's time.
And two of the office, two of the rooms I know have been painted since then, but some I'm pretty sure have not. And we're also in the process, I didn't put it in here, we are also getting an additional copier and fax machine. We have only one and we have to scan, copy and, and fax things constantly. And we recently had a mini crisis when our machine failed during a holiday. It was a five-day holiday and we had to persuade someone from Arlington County who was very nice, from their tech support, came up and, and managed to get it working. But there was no guarantee he could have. So we've talked with them about getting a second one, which will not be a terribly large expense, but just letting you know. On that note, I will be quiet and see if anyone has.
He said questions. Thank you. Yeah, no, that's fine. That's fine. No, you always are, yeah, you don't ever have big asks. Questions, colleagues, for our magistrate?
I just have one quick question about retention of your staff. I know it's a challenging hiring market. Are you, like, what's your average tenure? Do you have any trouble hiring and keeping people?
We have had the highest retention rate in the state for the last three years, which means I have not lost anyone in three years. One person has given me notice that they are going to be leaving and there's, you know, some others that are likely to in the near future. I do have the possibility of replacing that person rather than having to hire a new person. There are people in other jurisdictions in the area, which we cross-train our magistrates because we have regional and in some cases state authority. There's two people that have let me know that they're interested in moving over whenever we have an opening. And so we have very good retention. I don't claim it's up to, it's because of me necessarily, but, but we have the best in the state and we have people wanting to come work, work here, which is a good thing.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Mr. DeFranti?
Let's get the second copier. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Yep, second copier. Anything else? Yeah. Actually, Mr. Adam, I did have one question. On the, you know, thank you for the metrics and you're saying that you, the state keeps track of certain data, but it's, but there's things they don't keep track of. Have you thought of keeping track of it maybe yourself in-house? Would you?
We've tried, but it's hard because it's things they don't call on the computer a lot of times. Some things are on computer, they just don't think it's of interest for us to have because it's strictly for their purposes.
Yeah, but maybe for our purposes, it might be something you might want to do.
And we found that when you're, you know, because we work by ourselves, we're in very small groups and when you're busy, you don't always have a chance to log everything incorrectly. If you're having to mark something down on paper for, so it'd be difficult to keep track of things and have them be truly act.
Okay, okay. Or maybe an estimate. But anyway, thank you. Thank you for your work. All right. That brings us to our Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court. All right. Mr. Conklin and Judge Robb, I think. Nice to see you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Nice to see all of you.
All right, take it away. Yep, you're on, nope, hit it again. When the red light's on, you're good. You're good.
Okay. Good afternoon. I'm Earl Conklin. I'm the Director of Court Services for Arlington Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court. Let me introduce who's with us. Rob and Rob, our Chief Judge for JDR, Mike Chek, Judge for JDR, and Renika Lardy, Clerk of Court. Also, I want to introduce Rick Stroback, our Deputy Director, and Yvette Zaragoza, our Quality Assurance Manager. So all of the focus on data has been Yvette helping us. Shall I just begin?
Yes, please do.
Okay.
Maybe I should say welcome. It's nice to have everybody here. Go ahead.
So just to begin with a very broad overview of our department, I want to see if either the judges have anything they'd like to say before we begin.
Yes, you got it. Nope, nope, nope. Hit it again. Now stop. It's, the red light's on. You're good.
Wonderful. First, I want to express my sincere appreciation to the County Board and to the Deputy County Manager and County Manager for the county. We're very excited about approval for a full-time employee for both DDP and the RISE mentoring program. Our DDP program serves electronic monitoring. There were over, for year-to-date this year, four thousand six hundred and ninety-six days of supervision, right? And so those folks are perpetually out in the field, all hours of the night, trying to follow up and making sure that the kids are where they're supposed to be and getting whatever they need to have. The RISE mentoring program, we currently are serving nineteen youth, but there are twelve on the waiting list. And the mentoring program is a fabulous program because it's not court ordered, it's all voluntary. But it does take, allow the children to be able to connect with, you know, an adult, a caring adult. And if they get connected to mentors, then that usually ends up taking them out of the juvenile court system, right? Then we're also grateful for the point five full-time employee for GOP and for Young Achievers. Both of those programs run with a waiting list all the time. They always have a waiting list. And the Girls Outreach Program is the Girls After School Program. And they are not just corny folk youth. They accept referrals from the school system, from parents. And Young Achievers is, has a capacity of eight and Girls Outreach a capacity of ten and they operate well over that. So having the additional staff would be able to, allow us to be able to serve more, more youth in the community. So we're very, very grateful for that. Did you have anything about Safe Havens you wanted to add?
You know, I, the only thing I would say about Safe Havens is for, for us, it is absolutely essential. It's, you know, by the very nature of the cases that are going to Safe Havens, they're high-risk cases. They're cases where there's some reason for a need of an extra set of eyes and extra assurance of safety and the circumstances that exist, whether there's a history of domestic violence, a history of, you know, those types of things. So from our perspective, it's absolutely essential. I mean, it's, 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 there's not an option not to have something like that.
And we have applied for a new grant. I guess we'll hear from that, Mr. Conklin or Mr. Stroback in October, to see whether or not we can get another grant to, to run the program. It's essentially, it's essential to the success of, of young people in the juvenile court, so.
And Safe Havens does a couple of things. They do, they provide, they provide supervised visitation so that a parent has visitation with a child, but they also provide opportunities for safe exchanges. So sometimes it's just an exchange, right, where they need a safe place to have an exchange where there aren't any incidents or any heightened levels of danger, so.
I'm sorry.
That's fine. I remember when we began that program. And it was a big deal.
Very grateful.
Yeah.
So I won't spend too much time on our, kind of our overall mission, other than to say safety is a big factor. We believe in juvenile court that the safe, way to keep the community safe is through promoting behavior change in the clients we work with. And so most of our resources go towards that. That's really what we, we are marshall to do. Diversion, we're committed to diverting kids where we can from the court system. We have good community partners to which divert them to and provide services. So we value that. And then our services strive to be evidence-based or evidence-informed and make sure that we're relying on what is known to work. Overall department, there really are three components to JDR. There's the judges' chambers, there's a clerk of court, and then there's court services, the programs that we operate. So the funding for, for the judges goes to their office, all of those types of things, supplies. There's a courthouse renovation coming to us. Thank you for that. And we all have to relocate to somewhere, but in the end, it's going to be much more conducive to the, the needs of the kids and families that come into JDR. And the technology improvements are also valued. Clerk of Court has six deputy clerks. The budget there goes towards supplies and office things and the supplement for the clerk staff, which we greatly appreciate. This is a expensive area to live in and without that supplement, it would, it would be complicated for the clerks. The court service unit is the third component. Within that, we have our community-based services and then we have the court service units itself. The court service unit staff are based at the courthouse. We do early diversion, which are things that work with kids and families who contact, who are identified, attempt to contact, but don't need to be involved in the court yet. We do everything we can to try and serve them without even putting those kids in the system. We don't want their name written down. We don't want them in the, in the state database. We try and provide services to them as early as we can. Those services look like our mentoring program, which is part of our funding, our some case management and referral services we do for those families and kids, RISE mentoring, our gang prevention services, and then our Girls Outreach, which is also one of our community programs. But as Judge Robb mentioned, those girls get services without coming to the court, direct referrals from schools and parents. So that's the early diversion efforts that we do, which don't show up in any of our numbers for court cases or anything related to that. And then court intake is a process by which our staff meet with police officers, parents, child welfare staff, school attendance officers, family members who are seeking to file petitions, open a court case, get a protective order, you know, deal with truancy, child removal for foster care types of cases. That's our court intake office. And then juvenile probation and parole, case manager, our cases are running high. I will tell you, things are trending way up in juvenile court right now. Like the rest of the region, we're seeing more serious offenses. We're seeing our numbers climb, as you can see in some of the data that we have. It's not a trend we're happy about, but, you know, it is something with which we're doing our best to respond. So our probation cases are averaging about twenty per probation officer now, which is quite high. Our target is more in the fifteen level range, given what we do with kids on probation now. And then our adult probation unit, probation staff, counselors work with primarily domestic violence offenders, people who have done harm in their, to a family member or household member. And our staff work with them to get services as ordered by the court. And then we have three behavioral health staff in our unit, a court psychologist who largely does assessments and provides consultation to the court, and then a therapist at Argus House and a therapist, bilingual licensed therapist in court services. And then our community-based programs, I'll just mention them briefly. I think most of you are familiar with them. We have two group homes, which we are so grateful for. We're blessed to have them. They do excellent work. They stay at or near capacity all the time. Argus House is right down here in Clarendon. I would welcome to give you a tour at any point you would like to come see these programs. Aurora House is administered by Falls Church City, primarily Arlington youth. It's Falls Church's contribution to our system. It's a beautiful house, takes girls from Arlington, Fairfax and Alexandria. Argus House also takes youth referred by Alexandria and Falls Church. And then our after-school programs, which are getting enhanced potentially in this budget. Young Achievers is an after-school program, serves eight, has a capacity for eight youth. It's kind of crammed into space at Argus House. We would love to find at some point in the future a place to move that to so it can expand, but the, the facilities limit it to eight youth. limit it to eight youth. And then Girls Outreach, we've mentioned, it's right here in Court Square West, and it serves 10, 12 girls at a time, and they are referred by the school system primarily now, but our court also does place kids in the program. And then the Safe Havens program you've heard about, and RISE mentoring is, you know, we've kind of worked with this program with existing staff who have other jobs. And this was something we started because we needed it. And it's outgrown our capacity with caseloads rising, cases rising, to continue to do it in that way. So we're very grateful at the prospect of having a full-time mentor coordinator. This will serve kids, not just involved with the court, but any youth who needs a caring adult. We are not, across our services, we really try and make them available without court involvement. We don't want that to be kind of the, the cost to get into a group home. So we often will take kids through other means. So the budget highlights, just mentions the three areas of enhancement in our budget. I'm not going to review them. I've mentioned them all already. Equity, the vast majority of kids who come into our court system and adults are BIPOC, kids and families. We know that. It is, there's disparity in how things happen in bringing them to us in terms of their, their representation of the overall county. Our goal is to make sure we treat that, we treat with fairness, with equity in the services that we provide. So our judges initiated a racial and ethnic disparities team. We collect data on every decision point that happens in our court system. We look at the equities and inequities in the system and identify ways to respond. Our, our current goals have to do with probation violations. There are things that often drive kids deeper into the juvenile justice system, so we're working to reduce probation violations and thereby keep kids out of detention, keep them out, get them out of the court system sooner. We're committed to restorative justice. We work with our partners. And our early diversion services, I've already mentioned. So I'll just point out here, you can see the climb in probation cases. If you look at the number of youth served, these are unduplicated kids in the court system. You can see in '22, we had 283. Actuals in 2023 jumped to 412, and we're estimating 480 in the current year based on where we are. So these numbers are trending up like they are in the region, like they are in the state, but we're, we're, we are not immune to what we're seeing around us. And then you can see some of the assessments. These are some new performance goals that we have, assessing kids, getting them connected to services, and successful outcomes. The next page is summary of the changes. The additional FTEs are what seems to be driving this, as well as the prospect of the Safe Havens grant. It is, we have replied for a, we've applied for a continuation grant. This, our current grant expires in October. We should hear in September whether or not we are renewed. At some point, I mean, this would be our second continuation grant. We've got the first original, so I don't know how long they'll keep continuing us, is I guess my point. But it is, Safe Havens is a program that we highly value and I think provides a great service. Again, the proposed changes details the FTEs that are proposed to be added to the court services. I always make sure we include something about our juvenile detention center. You can see the trend line. More kids are going to detention. We are averaging about, just almost 11 kids on a daily average placed by the Arlington JDR Court in our juvenile detention center now. So that is a trend we're not happy about. It would be much higher without detention diversion. Our detention diversion staff directly impacts that. As Judge Rob mentioned, the service levels have been high. We've had waiting lists. Generally, the average waitlist for the current year is about 11 days for a kid to be able to get into detention diversion. So that's a concern. This new position will change that. So kids will, will either not be in detention or be in detention for a much shorter time because of that position.
And I think the numbers, sorry. The, we have fewer children in the detention facility than the city of Alexandria does, and the city of Alexandria's length of stay is considerably longer than ours. Most of the kids stay how long in Arlington?
Arlington averages about eight days for a youth to be in juvenile detention. The city of Alexandria was somewhere around 22 days.
Interesting.
I mean, it's, a lot of different factors can, can affect that. So that's not a... I think our detention diversion program and our electronic monitoring programs, our group homes, our after-school programs, all give options to the court with which to bring kids out and trust that they're getting services.
Yeah. It's nice that Alexandria decided to fund it.
And then key budget considerations, just looking in the future, you know, things in juvenile court are trending upward. We're not sure where that will plateau. Our gang prevention services, our mentoring programs, those are all things that there is a demand for. I would love to spend time with you sometime and tell you what we do around gang prevention. It is robust, it is effective, and it does keep kids from coming into the court system. Girls Outreach, Interagency Truancy Committee, you know, we're concerned about supporting the schools when it comes to chronic absenteeism. We see petitions come, and we have diversion services that we provide to those youth, as well as sometimes filing petitions so that they get court supervision when needed.
All right, thank you.
That's it.
Okay, that's it.
Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Really appreciate it and appreciate all the work. Questions, colleagues? Ms. Coffey, you have a question?
Yeah. On the Safe Havens program and the supervised visitation, understanding that hopefully we will hear about the grant, hopefully we'll get it again, does the proposed budget propose that we fund it locally and continue the services, or are we going to discontinue them until we hear about the grant?
Funding is included up until the grant expires. I think we're funded, we have some carryover funds, which will support it for a while, but I don't think there is funding for the entire year in the budget.
Not for, not for the entire year. We don't like to signal to potential grant wars that we've covered it, to give them an excuse, right? But as we did, in what we discussed with the manager, is it would be a closeout proposal. The timing on this works well, you know, via contingent or closeout once we figure out the award. And so we will be back to you the minute we hear with recommended options for filling, but that is the, that is our plan.
That's the plan, sounds good.
So we're not, we will not have...
For the Safe Havens program, we would love to...
Yeah, yeah. But just confirming we're not having a gap or a sudden stoppage in the service. That's great. And then I think on some of the youth diversion programs, you mentioned that it's voluntary. So I guess I have a couple of questions about how, how do kids get into the program? Are there waitlists? Like what, kind of procedurally, what happens if someone is recommended or referred to actually get them from that recommendation to receiving services and participating in the program?
It depends which, which program you're talking about. Each of them have a different path. I think Judge Rob was referring to the mentoring program, which, parents, school, we've had kids come in where they were filing a custody petition, you know, so it's not a criminal petition. And there was a sibling that was at risk. And so there've been ways on, our staff and others have just identified who could benefit from the program. School officials, child welfare staff, referrals have come from a variety of places. The court itself may have one child, a sibling, you know, maybe in the wings. So, but the other diversion programs really come, someone identifies a youth and refers them to the court for something. Could be a police officer because they're being called multiple times to a residence because a girl is running away. It could be a school official who's, you know, referring for truancy problems. We divert those programs, those youth, from the system into some of our diversion programs.
And is there a waitlist that's maintained? The, the case numbers are pretty small in terms of how many we can serve at a time.
Well, there is a, there's been a tremendous waitlist for the mentoring program. We have not advertised it or pushed it too much because we don't have, we haven't had the staff
Don't have the resources, yeah.
To really expand it.
Yeah.
And I'm excited about the opportunity to really begin recruitment of mentors and take referrals and see where we can, we can grow that program.
And I think for us, like there are, I mean, Earl said this, but just to highlight it, there are a lot of cases where, like, let's say, for example, maybe I have two siblings who are both Chin's kids, right? They're on court supervision. There's a lot of struggles with the family. The probation officer, the court services unit is very connected to the family and to kind of what's going on. And there's a, there's a, you know, eight-year-old sibling there. And so now there's an opportunity for, you know, for, for that kid to sort of get involved with, with the activities, with the program, and some of the things that are going on and that sort of thing, to hopefully, you know, avoid things going down, the need for court supervision down the road for, for that kid.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Kertanis.
Thank you. A little bit in the same, the same area. So I was trying to understand the, the ask for an additional FT for RISE mentoring coordinator here. So the, I understand what, I mean, the narrative supports what this position will be about. My question is, is that also a, a position that can expand in its scope to doing other things with the, with the other initiatives as well? Is, is it possible to, to employ on both sides, or is it not?
I think our goal is to have someone dedicated to run the RISE mentoring program because so much work is needed to recruit the mentors.
So this is a full-time job.
I believe it will be. The way it may expand is, not every volunteer they interact with may be capable of taking on a mentoring relationship, and we have many other volunteer opportunities in our court. All of our programs work with volunteers. So there really will, would be an opportunity to kind of channel a volunteer to the experience that might be best suited for them. So in that sense, it would expand.
What I'm after to elicit is whether investment in these specific needs is actually building capacity on the long term, so that we, you know, when we try this avenue, we will have people who are now used to do this, but they will be also capable of serving other avenues and other avenues, et cetera, because I, I see here a changing, a changing challenge, and that needs, you know, changing responses. That's what I was thinking about.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham.
I am similar to the waitlist question. If, if we were to truly invest in our young people and make sure that every child were served, what, what would you change about your budget, your staffing, your partnerships? Easy question.
We would, we would have a space for, I think, number one, we would have a space for something like our Young Achievers program. Number two, we would have a space for our Young Achievers program in South Arlington, rather than having to do it in North Arlington, because the majority of kids that go to Young Achievers are from South Arlington, from the 22204 neighborhood. I, I think having an opportunity for those kids to have a space that's closer to their home, that's closer to their family, where transportation's not an issue, it would be awesome. I think giving opportunities for kids to have adult eyes on them during the hours of, you know, 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM is essential on weekdays, because I think those hours are critical hours for, for kids. And the Young Achievers program is, is, I think, I just keep going back to that one, but Girls Outreach is the same thing. I mean, those are the programs that provide for spaces for the, for kids during those critical hours. So I think something that, that focuses on those hours for kids and in the neighborhood where most of the kids that we see live.
And I don't think it's just for purposes of supervision. Both, all of those programs really are geared towards providing opportunities to grow and to, for independent living, right? So they're doing things like budgeting. They're doing things about wellness. They're taking kids to, on college tours. They're providing them a forum to be able to develop skills where they can, they can blossom on their own, right? So it's not just, you know, we're here to watch you and make sure you do things. It's also engaging them in, in, in independent living skills and betterment, and also, you know, developing lifelong relationships, especially with, I would go back to the, the gang prevention. There are so many kids that participate in that yearly soccer tournament. It's so phenomenal. I hope you all would come. And so the kids that have been diverted from joining gangs and stuff come back years later. They're still involved. They're coaches. They're being referees for the programs. So it's all around developing well-rounded young people.
I think the Young Achievers program, because of its size, it only serves court-involved kids. Having that have the capacity as an additional program or an expanded program to do what Girls Outreach does and not require kids to come into the court system to get access to everything that they, they need, it would be a tremendous benefit, I think.
Kind of folds into our gap analysis, I think.
Yeah, I've been in conversations with APS about options, just so you know, so working through that, because Earl has, Earl and I have been working so closely together on this for the last six, nine months, really intensely. And then other opportunities. So we're, we're, we're working that. We need to be mindful of security of space and all those things. So trying to be thoughtful about it, not just randomly stand up a program in a small room in Arlington, Mel, may not be the wisest thing, given, if you, if you visit, I mean, I've been to both Young Achievers and Girls Outreach. They're amazing programs, but it's pretty, it's, you know, you gotta, I'm just echoing what you're saying, how it's structured, how the space is used, security, all those things I think are really, really important, too.
Yeah, you have to be intentional. Yeah, thank you. Good question. Mr. DiFrante.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first, your comments were actually a segue. Thank you, Ms. Cowan, because I know you've been all in this budget presentation, and there are whole parts of our budget where we are not proposing any FTEs. And so just to thank you for all the work. On Safe Haven, I guess I'll kind of try to ask for a favor. Usually we initiate out of our office for, for, to go see programs. I'll ask Ram, but if, if you remember, just, I want to see that program, and if you want to send that email, Earl, that's great.
We'll reach out.
That'd be great. All of you, all six of you who are here, thank you for your work. You're fighting for kids, and it's important. And then last is just a thank you to you, Ms. Cunningham, for raising the question. We do have to get it in the right timeframe, but as a team, this board, and I, I'll just fess up, I can't work every problem on the board side. And so I'll support you in that effort to work on that, Young Achievers. Mindful that that could be a CIP, it could be a neck, it's feasible, it could be a next budget year. I don't want it to be, but you guys know that process. So those are a series of just thank yous, and I will, I think it's also worth saying succinctly, we've had advocacy from our broader community, I believe, in after-school programs. Some of those students we serve are, there's, they're not perfect Venn diagrams of overlap for the students that are these programs. You know, you shared that there are kids who are addicted to fentanyl, and it keeps me up every night, and not all of those kids will just be served by an after-school program. And so the investments here may not be what is easy to see for the community, but the investments here may be the kids who are most in need. I want to do both, but you can't do everything in every budget. So that's just two cents. Thanks.
Thank you. I think there's a lot of support on this board for the work that you all do, and we really appreciate it. One quick question for you, Mr. Conklin. Just sort of, so what do you think is the cause of this increase? Is it coming out of the pandemic? I'm guessing that that's some of it, that mental health seems to be such an issue right now for adults and children. Do you have a theory on what, I'm guessing it's the pandemic, but any other thoughts?
So just to highlight, in fiscal year '23, the top three reasons a youth might be involved criminally in our court, these are not the truancy or runaways, these are, these are...
Criminals, yeah.
Were petty larceny, larceny of an auto, and simple assault. In FY '24, the top three reasons kids became criminally involved in our court so far this year are robbery using physical force, which is a violent felony, assault by mob, which is a violent felony, and robbery using a firearm. So the nature of what kids are doing in Arlington County that brings them into the court, that's one data point. Not all of these are Arlington residents, but it's one data point, is, is changing. So that's alarming.
But it's good to be aware of it and, and think about it, because it is alarming. And I think it's a larger social issue that we all need to be aware of. So we won't solve it today, but do appreciate everything that you're doing, and thank you so much for coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no, thank you. All right, that brings us, we're only a little bit behind time, not too bad. So thank you all. No, no, it's fine. Office of the Public Defender, I think our public defender's here, Mr. Haywood.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome. Take it away.
Thanks so much. Yes, you know, we're the Office of the Public Defender. We could skip to the next slide. Since we have two new board members, thought it might be good just to kind of go over what our mission is and our role in the criminal legal system. So that's our formal mission statement, Virginia Indigent Defense Commission. And then if we can move to the next slide. So there are two hallmarks of model indigent defense, and those are to be zealous and to be client-centered. We aspire to be a model office. We actually, we want to be the best office in Virginia and this region. As far as zealous representation, essentially, that stems from the idea that injustice happens when no one is on watch holding the government accountable. That's when you get false convictions, you get unjust punishment. And we, as defense attorneys, especially public defenders that are often overworked, under-resourced, underfunded, we're always at a disadvantage. I think that's fair to say. We're always at a disadvantage in court and in this system. So often, we have to push harder just to achieve a just result. There is, I think there have been growing pains over the past several years, just in terms of getting accustomed in our courthouse to zealous defense, really zealous defense. But we, as an office, I think we're sticking with it, and I think we're doing a really good job, to be honest. I've never felt better about the quality of lawyering in my office. We have some exceptional trial attorneys. We've really invested in training. We've seen results in court. It's been really satisfying. And we also have a really strong appellate practice, recognition in the Indigent Defense Commission for that. In fact, we actually just learned that we won an appeal today. So in addition, model defense, indigent defense is client-centered. That syncs up with the second two bullets that are on this slide. And all that means, I mean, it means what it says. It's self-explanatory. It means putting our clients at the center of all we do. There is truly not, looking, pick the worst defend, worst case you could ever imagine, terrible capital case, no matter who it is, no matter the case, no matter the client, there's always an explanation for why every single one of our clients found themselves in, involved in the criminal legal system. Our jobs as advocates is to find out that reason and help others see our clients as whole people who deserve to be treated fairly. In addition, we happen to be in a unique position. As defense attorneys, we have confidentiality, confidentiality and privilege. It is a unique relationship in the criminal legal system. It's our relationship a judge has with their clients, a probation officer, prosecutor, police officer, no one else. And that entails for us, we, that entails another responsibility that we take very seriously as well. It entails a duty to help our clients not just make good, or sorry, make good choices, not just about their cases, but about their lives. And I often say that we aspire to help our clients achieve not just good legal outcomes, but good life outcomes. And that, I think, actually, we are thankful, I think this county wants that, too, and our courthouse increasingly, I think it always has, I think there's always been that desire amongst all stakeholders, but I think increasingly over time, there is more of an understanding that we're all, regardless of our perspectives and how we operate in a courtroom, that's the goal that we all have for our clients and for our community. And lastly, on this slide, the board has all, you've all supported advancing, making progress in our criminal legal system and reform to some extent. And we definitely play an essential role in that process. It is a, it's sort of a nonstop sort of organism that we have to sort of, we all have to invest in, we all have to be active in, to make sure that it works well. We, however, I would say, we really play an essential role in that regard. We don't have any constituency other than our cause and our clients. We don't really have to do much balancing of interests. We know who we fight for. We are advocates for vulnerable people and for the Constitution and for our clients' rights, full stop. So we bring that reform to, or sorry, that perspective to reform conversations, and I think it really matters. And I think, I think the county's benefited. We know we've benefited. And with that, I will turn to Ellie.
Sure. So I'll start with the next slide. So regarding caseload and staffing levels, we remain fully staffed. Anytime we have an opening, we are able to hire right away. And we've been very grateful to hire really excellent people. The highest case numbers for our office in the history of our entire office's existence were the last fiscal year and fiscal year 2023. And we felt it. We were really pushed to our limits. So a couple times this year, we've even had to ask for a reprieve in getting certain types of cases just so that we can make sure we're serving all of our clients properly and staying on top of our responsibilities. Obviously, there's some issues that are Arlington-specific with clientele and just overall trends. I know you're hearing from lots of people in the system today, but mental illness is very, very high. It's very high post-COVID in general. It's very high in an urban atmosphere. It's very high in Arlington for a variety of reasons, whether it's proximity to DC, the urban nature. It's very high in our jail, and the acuteness of the illness, the degree of the illness is very high. And so we are committed to serving all of our, all of our clients and to doing right by them, including making sure that we are in touch with them, we're communicating with them, and that they are best represented and informed about their cases. We, one of the things we're trying to do and that we've asked for your help on is getting the mental health lawyer role. As the county board knows, we participate in the Behavioral Health Docket as well as the Drug Treatment Court. And I think the role of mental illness in the criminal legal system, the accountability, basically the moral blame-worthiness of people who find themselves in the criminal legal system on account of mental illness, are all very complex topics, as well as accessing health and services in the community. So that's something that we are really working hard to expand and to provide appropriate services for, and it's just a huge part of our workload. Regarding pre-trial reform, our office has been able to do next-day bond advocacy in virtually all of our cases in which it's appropriate. Some of our cases may not be appropriate if they're, you know, very serious or there's some other intervening issue. But we contact all of our clients the day we're appointed to the case and prepare bond motions for the next day. One of the programs that I know the county board has heard a lot about is the bond diversion program, and that was providing a tremendous service. And I will let the DHS people talk to you about the intercepts and all of that and where it fit in. But the methodology behind that was getting people into proper services earlier to help prevent them from staying in the system longer and becoming iller in the process. So a lot of that has become, you know, we're making plans for people in the absence of that program and working a lot with community organizations and hospitals and community partners, people in jail and things like that, to try to help get people in the proper services and make sure that, you know, we are not leaving them languishing and not exacerbating their mental illness.
The third bullet here talks about public defender makes diversion work. And I think everyone probably agrees that good diversion programs seek to help people who cannot or perhaps are not allowed to receive help outside of the criminal legal system. That is, as opposed to diversion programs that funnel people who simply need help into the system, which would have the effect of increasing our society's reliance on police, courts, jails, prisons, to solve social problems. That's not what we want to do. We want to move more towards a model where the help is being given and received outside of the criminal legal system. I think that is one of our main jobs. I know, I talked before about how we, that's a perspective we bring, and that's, I think, how it works in practice. And in addition to that, we aim to build a constructive dialogue with other stakeholders, with other stakeholders while remaining zealous. That's not always easy, but I've been really encouraged myself, and I think, I think a lot of people have outside of our office as well on certain fronts. BH, the Behavioral Health Docket is, I think, a really great example. There are so many different perspectives in that program. I mean, you know, there's DHS, there's probation, there's prosecutors, there's judges. I mean, we all have different ideas of how the legal system should work, probably. But somehow, we've found a program that we can all stand behind. And it's only a few years old, but it's, we're already seeing many really inspiring success stories. And I don't think any of that would have been possible if we didn't have that constructive dialogue. And I think every day, every week, every month, year, we are, I think, increasing trust in each other, and it just, it's great. And I think it not only is working just on that level, but, you know, there's always interest in scaling up, and there's an interest, I think you can see how the things we're doing, the concepts we're employing can be applied in other areas of our legal system. And I'll talk about this in a moment. We're thankful the county, and Ellie's touched on this as well, we're thankful the county has agreed to enhance our capacity for representations of, representation of seriously mentally ill clients and our work with the diversion initiatives. So back to you, Ellie.
All right. Community engagement. We're involved in countless meetings, committees, things like that, from everything from the J and DR team to the specialty dockets to county-based initiatives, DHS mental health meetings, reentry committee through probation, restorative justice, and all of those sorts of things. Our commitment is, of course, that we want our county's programs to be the best, and we want our clients to be able to access them when it's appropriate for them to be able to access them. We want those opportunities to be there, and we want these programs to be built out. So we're involved in so many of those. We also work together, of course, with state or county, you know, advocates or employees to help advocate for the mentally ill and help work together to find solutions to all of those difficulties.
So the last bullet and the next slide are actually kind of overlapping. So if we want to move to the next slide. Slide five. Thank you. So Rachel, this is about equity. And I think racial justice is in some ways, maybe many ways, synonymous with our mission, which probably goes without saying. And we value diversity for all the same reasons that I'm sure you do. But we also value it in a different, in another way, that I think is unique to our profession. It's because a diverse staff makes us more effective as lawyers. Diversity, to me, is merit. I believe that very strongly. And also, lived experience makes it so much easier to, first of all, empathize with clients. Most of our clients are black and are poor, and a lot of our clients are also, we have black and brown clients, just, it's a large majority of the people we represent. And so it's not easy, not only easier to empathize, but also to tell our clients stories. I think when you have similar lived experience, that just becomes easier. And then also to do so zealously, you know, when it's personal, you have that passion, and I think people can tell, and you're more effective as an advocate. Ellie?
Um.
Next slide. Oh, sorry. No, I'm still on. My bad. So just real quick on this one. We, the increase in our state salaries has led to an increase in our supplement. We mentioned that as a possibility. That had been in the works a long time. The Indigent Defense Commission did a great job working with the legislature and the governor to get pay increases. I know the county board had committed a number of years ago to achieving pay parity at some point. This gets us closer, and I think actually takes, even though it's a raise this year from the county, it takes some of the burden in the future off of the county to achieve pay parity. And Ellie will talk in a moment about the impact of pay parity and why it matters to us in staff retention. And the other, the other main factor here is the county has agreed, as Ellie mentioned, to elevate our county-funded paralegal to an attorney position. We've never used the paralegal really for paralegal work. We have such a huge need for mitigation and for sentencing advocacy, reentry planning. That's what that person does. And now we are able to hire, we actually already hired the person, or pending funding. Put that in our offer letter. We're not, we're not taking that for granted. But we, somebody's interned with us for actually several years now, and she has an MSW and also a JD, just incredibly smart, incredibly empathetic, and already does great work for us. And I think just having that, being able to sync up the legal work with all the social work is going to make our work more efficient and help us better collaborate with other stakeholders. Now, Ellie.
All right, next slide. So we've always said our goal is pay parity with the prosecutor's office. Based on the state raises and the county matching the supplement to the new raises, I think we've largely been able to get pay parity for our entry-level assistant public defenders. And so we can only promote people when other people leave. And so that'll, you know, otherwise, entry-level employees are stuck at that level until someone leaves. So people who are work in our office, a lot of our support staff even might have masters in social work or other sort of advanced degrees that are not law degrees. Obviously, the lawyers all have law degrees. People have loans. People have obviously a very high cost of living, living in our area. And we've always grappled with this issue of people wanting to be able to live and work in the jurisdiction that they're committed to, but not necessarily being able to afford that, or depending on a, you know, a double-income family or something like that. So we've certainly advanced toward that goal of our employees being able to work and live in the same community, and also not just to live in the same community as an entry-level employee, but able to make a career out of it based on it. So we are grateful for that. It's certainly helped us to recruit great people. We are able to attract people to come to our office, not just with what we do, but also with us being able to pay them a valuable salary, so.
In conclusion, I think there's a history of this, and also just still a temptation in court systems or local governments to take a public defender's office for granted. Judges, elected officials, prosecutors, they don't always think about the impact of, you know, changes or things they do on our workload. So like, when they ask for more detailed mitigation, when they create a new program, they need defense counsel in order for that program to function. There's an assumption sometimes, not saying, clearly not saying this about you, there's an assumption that we'll always sacrifice for our clients. And so we'll be willing to, you know, we'll be willing to make more sacrifices just to make a program work. And you know what? That's actually true. We will. We will do that. But it feels really great when we know that our local leaders see us, that we, you see the work we're doing, and you care enough about us and our clients to not take us for granted. So along those lines, I really, really wanted to express my sincerest gratitude for how the county has supported indigent defense in our office. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. I'll see if colleagues have got some questions. Mr. DiFranti, you want to start?
Bond diversion and mental health docket are the two follow-ups that I currently have related to your investment. On the last point that you made, it's very helpful to see the entry level, you know, transparent. I want to work on it, but I'm better able to work on that ongoing piece of it next year than I am this year. I don't mean in any way to contradict your point. Want to get there and need eventually to know the score of ongoing that we have. But we are cutting a number of positions. And the other pieces of it, I was really grateful to see from the manager's office. So let me work to see about the bond diversion, and I have to work with the manager's office on that. And the mental health docket is probably for the judge and seeing, because it's not in the draft budget. But thanks for your work.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham.
I'm curious, what is the gap to get to full pay parity, which it sounds like is our ambition?
It's always a moving target. We have to FOIA people in order to find that out. So I actually don't know off the top of my head. Do you know?
How many?
I don't know. As the positions get higher, the disparity gets greater. And our salaries all just changed in December, and then they'll change again, hopefully in July, when the supplement catches up. So the numbers actually changed like three times in the last year.
Yeah.
I would, another thing, I know we talked, we use this language about entry-level attorneys. There are no entry-level attorneys in our office. I think that actually sometimes the people who work on misdemeanor dockets in our courthouse have to deal with the most complicated issues, you know, because they've got to understand mental illness, you know, substance use disorder. They've got to, they've got to have a sort of communication with stakeholders, have good relationships with them. They've got to know what programs are out there to get clients into. So it really, really helps to have some people stick around. And I think, you know, if we had in the future some ability to elevate some of those APD ones, assistant public defender ones, to a higher salary, that would be lovely. But yeah, just wanted to add that.
And maybe this is for Ms. Cowan. The, we just did the job family study, which you would hope would get everybody on parity. Is that just the nature of a very unique role?
Well, I think it's a little bit of an arms race for every position in the county, because we do the job family studies every, you know, two, three, four years. And then if others in the region, right, are increasing, right? So I can't speak to the actual specifics of the Office of Public Defender. I'm happy to follow up, but I don't. It's always an issue. Once we increase, I'm telling you, the next year, positions fall behind, depending, like, you know, Prince William and Fairfax. behind, depending, like, you know, Prince William and Fairfax and Loudoun have been doing huge increases lately, and we have not been able to keep up, so, but I can follow up more specifically, if that's okay.
All right, thank you. It sounds to me, actually, from your response, that in some ways what you'd rather have is better, is a better ladder for people to go up.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep. Ms. Coffey?
Yeah, I noticed in the, like, in the deep budget section, especially talking about caseloads and cases per attorney, one thing that is included in here is that the current staffing levels may result in us appointing cases to private attorneys. Is there a cost to the county of needing to do that?
If it's a county, if it's a county code violation, then yes, otherwise, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, I guess, you know, I know we're kind of operating at max capacity right now. Do you foresee, you know, I know we're not, we're adding an additional attorney this year, do you foresee kind of like, what is the trend? How many more attorneys are we really going to need to stabilize the workload here?
Yeah, this is the complicated thing about advocating for our office in this regard. I mean, you know, when we meet with Mr. Schwartz, it's like, do you want the, do you want the real answer, or do you want what we know to be like the realistic answer in terms of like staffing? I mean, the honest answer is, like, if we had double the number of attorneys, and each one of them, you know, if there was a mitigation specialist for every two attorneys, maybe that would be enough. It still wouldn't sometimes feel like enough. So, we, we're well short of, you know, public defender service across the, across the river. Now, we are actually making as much as them on the entry level, but they had, they actually do have, it's one investigator, every two attorneys, you know, and I think it's the same, same way with the social workers. There was a J-LARK study last year, that, the main conclusion of that study statewide in Virginia was that the biggest need was actually for more like social work types in, in public defender's offices, and I, you know, I kind of agree with that. You know, having the mitigation sort of mental health attorneys really going to help in that regard, but having really well-trained social workers, you know, can get people into programs who understand, like, whatever Medicaid, you know, local residency requirements, stuff like that, that could be a huge benefit.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, helpful. Mr. Karen Thomas?
Thank you, I'm Chair. We are really very proud of our public defender's office. One thing that I, I would like to really to pursue is to understand, to have really grasp of the huge dividend that we get from having a good public defender's office, it really pays off, I mean, like, like, in budgetary terms, in money terms, to have a version, to have robust mitigation, so that, that all pays off. I don't know if we ever really tried to capture the dividend of that. It is, in my opinion, huge. So, there is an argument to be made, it's not just trying to catch up with, you know, the competitive salaries of somebody, but it's actually trying to make this work, work for everybody here, even for the budget. And I think we, we have neglected a little bit this, this part of the equation to show, you know, how far better we are, because your office is doing such a good job.
Thanks. Thank you. Yeah, I don't know that people always do that math about how, you know, achieving different outcomes in the criminal courts can benefit budgets, but, you know, if, if we could do more robust reentry planning, and we had, you know, more programs, bond version, stuff like that, to put people to, I mean, there are probably 15 people in jail right now who would be out of jail. If we had a long-term residential substance abuse treatment program, or if we had the capacity to find those programs to get, to get people into, there are probably another 15 people who wouldn't be in the jail right now, because they're, they're the only long-term residential treatment program we have in Arlington is in the jail. So, yes, it definitely does, and I appreciate you mentioning that.
Oh, thank you. Well, thank you very much. I'm really struck by today how much our legal system is really our social services, mental health system, you know, and so is our, our law enforcement, and I think that's becoming clearer and clearer and clearer. So, thank you for what you do, because you're not necessarily set up to do that, but we're all trying to make that happen for people and make their lives better, so thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you. All right, that brings us to our general district court. Mr. Henshaw, I believe, is here. You guys are on next.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Going into evening.
Well, almost, yeah. We're not to six yet.
Yeah. Well, we will aim at being brief as we can. Good, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for hearing from the Arlington General District Court. I'm Brian Henshaw, the clerk of court for Arlington General District Court. With me today is also Chief Judge O'Brien, and also on our judge's staff is Judge Rucker and Judge Carrie Steele. Our court administrator is also Tarshen Fisher, and we've mentioned that because she actually works for our judges and is funded by this budget, so it's very important for us. Next slide. I'm going to go through these fairly briefly. This is our mission. We've, it's what we strive to do, is provide the best services we can to all people who come in through our clerk's office and through our court system. Next slide. Just an overview, just a reminder, I do, I realize we have two new board members, so welcome to the board, thank you for serving in, in this capacity. So, I'm just basically just touch upon these really quickly, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions if you want to at a later time, but this is just more about what we do with the general district court. We basically handle all criminal and traffic cases, which includes misdemeanors, traffic infractions, and preliminary hearings to determine probable cause, and felony cases. We also handle civil cases as well. For civil matters, the GDC has concurrent jurisdiction with the circuit court and presides over all civil claims damages not greater than $25,000. There are a couple of special exceptions, basically if that, under unlawful detainer cases, sometimes can go a little higher, unless a personal injury or wrongful death can go up to $50,000. We also preside over civil commitments as well, and then the clerk's office is really tasked with maintaining the record for all these, which also includes the financial record, so. Next slide. Our budget highlights, just one of the things I wanted to kind of catch you off the date, we are still continuing to build upon our e-filing system that we started last year through a partnership with, with Arlington County, and through the Department of Technology Services, I believe, DTS. And we're working collaboratively, collaboratively, also with the Arlington Police Department currently on their photo-in-force speed camera initiative. And so, that should be, you know, I'm sure they're going to be bringing that to y'all and explaining what that's going to be, but we are working with them as well. And then, we're continuing to work on developing innovative ways to make ourselves accessible, or more accessible to the general public. Next slide. So, our focus on equity, really, just two really things to kind of jump out. One is, we continue to make strides in our behavioral health care docket. I would defer to Judge O'Brien, she'd like to comment to anything in that regard.
We, as Mr. Haywood mentioned, we began the behavioral health docket a number of years ago, and it's been due large part to the county's support in being able to sort of beef up the numbers. Through the sheriff's department, we were able to get another pretrial person dedicated to the docket for the pre plea individuals. And then, our probation department was able to get a, a half position, because we have a lot of people on post plea. So, that has been really helpful. When we started, it was without any additional funding from the county, and it was all in-kind dedication of resources that behavioral health team already had in place. And now, we're collaborating with the circuit court, with our docket coordinator, with the drug court, and hoping to somewhat not blend, but to basically make the best, the best of the resources that we have available. We would love for you folks to come over and see the docket. We've invited, I think, the, Ms. DeFrante has come over at one point, and for our graduation ceremonies, we always want people to come, because those are the opportunities for the people who have made it through sometimes 18 months, to, some of them, two years, to actually get through the program, graduate, be drug and alcohol free, and consistent on their medications, and every single person who gets to that point has been housed. We have the economic development team, the housing coordinator, so it's, it's such a great collaboration of, of resources, and, and it's really fun to get to know the folks and to see not only the people on the docket, but to see the deputies from the jail who just are beaming when they see these folks that are just doing so well. And the clerks, they always want to know what happened, how so-and-so. So, it's really, it's, it's, everyone just sees, you know, how, how wonderful it is and the feeling that we get, and so, it's one of the, it's one of the favorite things that I do. And thank you all for your support.
Oh, thank you.
And our deputy clerks do enjoy going, because that, that's one place you definitely always, you know, must see hope, and that's, that's, that's rewarding to all of our deputy clerks. The only thing I wanted to add, this is actually just something we just recently started, we actually came out from something, I'm not sure where we got paperwork, Brian actually shared it with me, but it's a translation.
Yeah, that was an outreach from the economic development division along with legal aid. We had a meeting with them because of the uptick in evictions that we were seeing, and there was a resource that we had come up with that we're attaching to all of the eviction paperwork when it goes out, that has the, the contact numbers in multiple languages for individuals, so they can contact the county to see if there's availability for housing resources to avoid and stave off eviction. So, that's one of the things that, that we've instituted recently.
Yeah, and it's very important, because unfortunately, as a clerk's office, we cannot provide any aid or assistance, because that'd be perceived as legal advice, and so that's one of the things we can't do. So, this is one way that at least it puts any kind of defendants in touch with maybe, especially if they're getting paperwork on their doors, and they might not be able to understand it. So, I think it's another great example of collaborative effort between the agencies. Next slide. So, our, really, our budget summary does not present any new changes to our proposal from the years past, really. It's mainly established to cover our daily, our everyday expenses and the salaries of the supplements. Next slide. We also, do anticipate any of the impact from the budget reduction, we were able to absorb that. Most of where that came from was from malignum, had been carried over for many years, and has historically just not been tapped into. Some of that is, and this is the only place that we've got to kind of preface that, is that to understand the nature of a lot of the funds that we deal with, we can't, we don't even control over it. So, if for some reason there's an uptick in more need of, you know, public defenders, Mr. Haywood actually just described that, you know, if there was a local charge and everything, but in talking amongst the judges, we just, we don't have a whole lot of appointments from local funds. So, that's, we felt like we could absorb this, and even if we do get somewhat of an uptick, I feel like the budget could probably absorb it, you know, if we were to have any issues.
I'd like to point out that we're one of the few that are actually giving you money back.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, the little bit that we have.
Next, next slide. So, I kind of, we would, alluded to that a little bit with proposed reduction, ultimately, we can't control if there's a need of these funds, but we don't anticipate any of that need for those funds in the coming year. Just a couple of things, state employees did receive a mid-year raise, which was not factored in the current budget, but it is, has been worked into this budget as it's being presented, so we are very appreciative. I would not, I'd be remiss if I came here and did not thank you for our supplement that we graciously appreciate, and consequently, what I would say is actually, much like the magistrate's office, we have actually have a very significantly low turnover rate compared to a lot of our colleagues from around the state. It's not sole, I think, solely because of the supplement, because a lot of our other colleagues around the Northern Virginia area also provide that same, similar supplement, but I do think it does help, and on behalf of the staff, we are very thankful for your all's continued support. The only logistics thing I will just mention is, in general, the clerk's office is still very supportive of the continued investment in renovations of the courthouse. I know it's a process, I understand that. With that being said, our systems furniture sometimes does act up. A lot of people see it as furniture, a lot of people don't realize it's also a conduit for electricity, so, so what happens is that, that technology's gotten old, and so sometimes it's becoming more difficult to fix when we do have issues, so. But, we think we can hold out until we finally get to the second floor, whenever that may be. That is all that I have.
All right.
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you both. Questions, colleagues? Questions? Mr. DeFrante?
Sorry, I didn't know about the sheriff's plea, pre plea piece, and I know that DHS will be a subject of this, and probably, are you ready? We have a lot of needs. Are we ready for an additional mental health docket staff? And sorry, I just asked that question directly, it's, it's a little tricky. You don't have to say yes or no, I'm mindful of that there's, we have to build it the right way.
Right. Well, when we finally launched this, the, the feeling was we could handle 10 people, all right? And when it became very clear that there was a desire for the pre plea, post plea, we presented the obstacles to that, because the sheriff's supervised release staff is completely overwhelmed at that point, they've since added another person. And the amount of need that we were going to have to supervise individuals pre plea, we just didn't see the bandwidth there. So, when I spoke to the former sheriff, to Sheriff Arthur, she got it, and she went to it and was able to get the dedicated person. Same thing in the probation side, because of, of the supervision needs. The, I think we've kind of stretched it to 12 at this point. To go further than that, I do believe we would need someone else in that mix. And I'm probably not the best person to be able to identify who that might be, rather, the team itself, I think, would have to come together and sort of see how we could add more people. But, it's, it's not, it's, it's not an impossible task, but it would require more resources to do that.
Okay, so, I might, I might try and follow up and get guidance. I'm not addicted to an additional person by any means, we have other needs that are in the criminal justice system that are big, but I also want to do, if we said we were about diversion three or four years ago, and this is working, then we should invest, but do so smartly, and so, I'll follow up.
If you'd like.
Sure.
The, well, we're sort of halfway through. We typically have an annual retreat for the entire team. First year, it was a full day, so we could go over and tweak the handbook and things like that, but we usually hold that in August, and that's when we would have everyone together to brainstorm. I don't know how that would fit into your, your budget thoughts, if you would want to participate in that, or we could really put that on as a, an item to consider.
Sure, that sounds good. Let me touch base with, with the county manager, Ms. Cowan, and the DHS team. I'm sure that I will then hear about nine other things that are, where there are big needs for us to invest, but at the very least, I would want to hear the thinking by August, so if we can't get there this year, then we at least have your recommendations as to the next year, we'll figure it out.
Okay, so, the question would be, what, what would be needed to increase smartly and wisely the numbers in the docket?
That we're serving, yep, that's it.
Okay.
I'm going to take, I'm going to take chair's privilege and ask you, how many, what's the waiting, I mean, what's the waiting list, what's the number of people? So, you're serving 10 to 12 now, are we up to, you could do 24, or you, I mean, how, what's the need?
We just had two people last week that were being considered. One had to be continued out, because we couldn't, the public defender wanted a little bit more time to see if they could establish residency, because residency in Arlington is a prerequisite. I referred someone else today. I think we maybe have four people that are under consideration. Unfortunately, we had to terminate one person last week, we've got two more set for termination, three more. Sometimes we use termination hearings to sort of get people's attention and get them to focus on where they're going, so, that, you know, sometimes that opens up unfortunately slots, but we haven't turned anyone away recently, put it that way, because we didn't have road.
So, you're pretty much meeting the need.
unfortunately, slots. But we haven't turned anyone away recently, put it that way, because we didn't have.
So you're pretty much meeting the need with this 10 to 12. And it'd probably be good to have, like, an extra wiggle room for four more. So, okay, that's helpful to know.
Exactly. And, you know, the, what we've been doing, too, is trying to make sure that the defense bar, the prosecutor's office is very good. They've got one person who's kind of on top of identifying people who might be appropriate. But a lot of times, if it's not the public defender, the defense attorney doesn't really know. And we have had some private counsel refer people who had needs, but they didn't quite meet the need level for being engaged in the docket. So, you know, we've, those folks have been not accepted, really, because we would have probably over prescribed services for what their need level was. They didn't live in Arlington, you know. So there's a number of bases for why they wouldn't be accepted.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. Ms. Cunningham?
I have one question about page. It's the performance measures under clerk's office for District Court. It shows that the percent of fines collected dropped from 90% to 70% a couple of years ago during the pandemic. Is that, is that a, like, policy push, or is it just a, like, we're seeing on tax compliance that people aren't compliant?
I think it's a statewide issue. I mean, we just saw a lot of those numbers. One of the big things that really led to that drop in that number was the change from policy from the standpoint of the state. Courts used to be able to basically restrict, basically DMV transactions.
Gotcha.
Until defendants would pay. The state, I forget the exact year they changed that legislation.
Right. The law was changed where the, an individual's driving privileges were no longer suspended.
Yep.
And that.
That were unpaid fines and costs.
And that's really what led to that big drop.
Yep.
Right. It was at least three years ago, I think.
An explanation. Thank you. Ms. Cunningham? Right. Questions? Ms. Coffey, Mr. Karen Tonas?
No, I'm satisfied to hear that it's not a bottleneck for what we want to achieve. But it's a good thing that Mr. DiFranti is thinking about the capacity, right?
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for your work. Appreciate it. Yeah, no, it's great. Come a long way since I first got on the board, I'll tell you. I mean, all these dockets that have come on, it's great to see. It's great to see. Thank you. Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Last, but not least, Circuit Court. Judges Wheat and DiMatteo, I think, are with us. Maybe somebody else. Hi, it's nice to see you. Ms. Hargrove, maybe?
Yeah.
Hi. See you.
All right. Good afternoon. So.
No, you were on. Turn it back on. Red means you're on. I know red should say stop, but red means go. It's just.
No, I was looking for down here.
Yeah. You're good.
We're all good. All right. I'm going to make this short and sweet, because I know you've been here for a long time. So I'm, Judge Wheat, on behalf of the Circuit Court, if we could just flip to, I'm going to flip through our mission, pass our mission statement. It's just the state mission statement for the courts and go to departmental overview. As you all know, the Circuit Court is the trial court of general jurisdiction for the county of Arlington. I wanted to just give you an update on some of the trends that we're seeing in Circuit Court post COVID, as things have changed. And one of the big things that we're seeing is a large increase in self-represented litigants appearing in court. That's not just locally, but nationwide. But statistics that we've heard at different trainings suggest that in up to 60% of cases, there's a self-represented litigant. So, and we're seeing cases similar to the nationwide statistics, which has impacts on the court, largely because we're working with people who don't know the rules, don't know the playing field. And so you spend, we spend a lot more time explaining to them kind of how the process works and what's going to happen. So that's one thing that we're seeing. We are also seeing a large increase in the number of interpreters and the number of languages that we're having interpreters for in Circuit Court. So I think that's always been a big issue in General District Court and Juvenile Court. We're seeing a lot of that now in Circuit Court. In just the last couple of weeks, I've had cases with a Hindi interpreter. We have Spanish interpreters all the time. We've had Ukrainian Russian language interpreters, Arabic interpreters. So we're starting to see a big uptick in the use of interpreters during trials in Circuit Court. And again, why that's important to note in terms of time that it takes is when we have a trial, we have to have two interpreters. Because under the interpreters regulations, they have to switch every half an hour. And it is difficult sometimes to be able to come up with enough interpreters to cover, you know, a six or an eight-hour trial day. And so that can be a little bit of a scheduling challenge as well. We're also seeing, interestingly, an uptick in very long trials. So we now have this year a number of cases that are scheduled for trial 10 days or longer, which is very unusual. And I'm not really getting a handle on what all of that is about, but perhaps next year we'll be able to give you a better sense of that. But as we're scheduling those cases, we're noticing cases that are taking up a lot of time on the court's calendar, which does make scheduling also a little bit of a challenge. And that's one of the things that we're working on. Do you want to talk this minute about what you're seeing in Drug Court?
Good evening, everybody. Louise DiMatteo, good to see you. Thanks again for your support for Drug Court. You've been active for, oh, gosh, has it been 11 years? 10, 11 years? It's been a while. We have really changed around some of the ways that we're adding in additional services for folks who are dependent, but also mentally ill. And we're seeing that double, that dual diagnosis, as you've probably heard now several times today. We've added intensive forensic treatment to our typical MRT, which is a certain kind of drug treatment group program. We've added a peer recovery specialist to our team, and she's awesome. She's wonderfully communicative with our cohort, and they really relate to her. More people are using medical assistance, like, you know, medication to curtail cravings that you've heard about, buprenorphine, vuvitalin. And I'm getting all these names probably terribly wrong, but you know what I'm talking about. It's been very encouraged, and we've been able to manage that and add that in, which is excellent. That's helped quite a bit. Of course, as I've suggested, we're seeing more mentally ill folks in our program with serious mental illness. And so therefore, there's a lot more psychiatric care and medication as well. So our program has adapted a little bit to some of these changes in the cohort, the intensity of the illness, the intensity of the dependency. And as a result, we've kind of overhauled our handbook to coordinate more with the treatment that we're providing in a different orientation. So we're finding it to be very helpful. And so this is just highlighting a little bit, I think, on the slide, what we are really trying to focus on. And it's much more of a holistic, whole-person, life-changing kind of event, which we've talked about before, probably a little bit. Lots of good housing options that the county really has been pressing. You know that from DHS. And we're really seeing some good, good results from that. Independence House, I don't know if you know Independence House, down the street. It's awesome. The folks who live there are really getting a lot out of it. There's a lot of group treatment there, as well as life skills and things like this, and good interaction in a sober living environment. Would love to see some more sober living group homes in the county somewhere. It's really hard for people to shift out of a highly addictive, dysfunctional living environment to something more stable and healthy, so that they can get on the right track. So I don't know what y'all can do about that, but I'm just throwing that at you, because I know you're super interested in these sorts of things. But that's kind of a brief overview.
Thank you.
So in terms of our budget highlights, it's been a pretty flat year for us, which I'm sure is good for you all, given the budget demands you have this year. And staffing has been a primary issue for us, and really kind of trying to focus our staffing to address some of the changes that we're seeing in the court system. Obviously, we have to maintain state standards and try to conclude cases in certain periods of time under the state standards. You can kind of see that during COVID, those dropped behind pretty significantly. And a lot of that was just because cases either couldn't be heard, or litigants didn't want to travel, or were unable to come to court to do it. But we're finally starting to get caught back up with those standards. We also have taken our staff and refocused a little bit to try to address some of the issues with self-represented litigants, particularly with folks who are trying to get no-fault divorces without counsel in the court. And the problem is there are very strict statutory standards that they have to meet. And often the documents they file don't meet those standards. So there are problems. And so we have a staff person who's kind of dedicated to working, and our law clerks assist as well, but really working to reach out to folks, let them know what they're missing, what they need to submit, what they need to correct, trying to get them into court, and walking them through in court kind of what needs to be done so that they ultimately can reach the conclusion that they're trying to get to with getting a divorce, rather than just kicking their paperwork back and saying this doesn't, doesn't meet the standard. And so we've had, we've had a fair amount of success with that. One of the things that we did a number of years ago was put together a packet for self-represented litigants as to how to get an uncontested divorce. And we're devoting some resources now in updating that, because it hasn't been updated in about 10 years, and it's woefully behind. So we're working on trying to get that sorted out as well. Some of the issues with respect to staffing that have impacted the court this year are really not our staffing issues, but there are other staffing issues in the sheriff's office, in the clerk's office. So of course, security has been a big issue. And we've been working very closely with the sheriff's office, because turnover in the sheriff's office and lack of staff in the sheriff's office has resulted in large periods of time where we have not been able to have deputies in our civil courtrooms. And while that may not seem like a tremendous deal, given the number of judges who are being killed, which is a rising trend in this country, and it's generally resulting from civil cases, that is, that is a concern to the judges. So I will say the sheriff has been very responsive and has worked closely with us, but we've had to make a number of compromises to try to figure out how to make sure we could do our civil courts with the appropriate security, not just for the judges, but for everyone in the courtroom. And then that's affected whether or not they have enough staff to bring people over from the jail for criminal cases, right? And so we've had to make some compromises there. And so using technology, working with the sheriff's office, we've tried to accommodate that. But obviously, keeping numbers in the sheriff's office where they need to be is really essential for us, because it has a huge, huge impact for us. And so we also very much appreciate the manager providing funding, and the board providing funding for some additional staffing in the front of the courthouse, which hopefully will give the sheriff's office a few more bodies to be able to address all their various needs. As Judge DiMatteo said, not just on Drug Court, and I think you've heard from everybody, mental health is an issue across the board. And so we have been having that impact on our criminal dockets as well, with a number of defendants who present with very serious mental illness, which often has security pieces associated with it. It also creates issues in terms of timing of cases, as people have to go to Western State, come back, and that kind of thing. And so those are issues that we're having, having to juggle. And then obviously, and I think Judge DiMatteo can address this a little bit more, but we've been trying to work with some of those behavioral health issues on the Drug Court docket, which has been a challenge, because they require different kinds of resources and services than what we have. But I'll let you address some of what you all have been doing on the behavioral health end, and some of the discussions we're having about whether or not we could morph a behavioral health, more of a behavioral health model into Circuit Court.
Right. We encounter certain folks who certainly dual diagnosed, but the mental illness is more of the leading indicator, right? And that's how Judge O'Brien's court tends to work. And we've actually referred people from our Circuit Court cases into Judge O'Brien's court when they've had an intended case in the General District Court. So we've made it work. Because, as she referred, as she mentioned earlier, some of those, there's so much overlap in the services. There's a lot of good collaboration in DHS with these, with these providers. And Kelly Neiman and Tiara Thompson are excellent coordinators for us. They're doing both courts. So last year, I think I told you, we're trying to save a little money by having them do both things. And it's, this is also slopping over, if you will, into using some of the curriculum that the BHD is using. And so we had a person that we put into Drug Court, but we put, because he was, it was a felony case, and he really needed a lot more supervision. And that's the difference, right? The supervision you have in General District Court, behavioral health docket is very different than what some folks would need in Circuit cases. Okay. So you understand the difference there. As a result, that case did not work out very well. He's a really interesting person, and I kind of have a soft spot for him. But it can't always make everything work. It didn't work very well, not because of the program, but because of his needs. But we'd like to try to develop a Circuit Court-level behavioral health docket. And so we're working, we're going to work on applying, you know, the state has to approve the docket. There's a committee that reviews all these. And so Ms. Neiman and I are going to sit down and over the summer, try to figure out a way to make it work, and see what that's going to look like. Now, is it going to be the high-risk, high-need people that were currently serving in our Drug Court and in the General District Court? Maybe. Depends on what we see the need to be in the Circuit Court. And it can be a lower risk and higher need, or a higher risk and lower need, and we can cross those boundaries. But those kinds of services will have to be tailored to that cohort, and we would have to decide what is that cohort going to look like. And I think it's going to be needs-based, numbers-based, and then try to get the most we can out of, whenever we decide to implement for the most people we think we can serve. So that's the long way of answering the question. Sorry about that. But I thought there was a lot of interest from everyone on this question. And yeah, we see the issue, but it's, it takes a while to spin it up. It takes a while to identify the need. And is it at that high level, a lower level, a medium level? We'll see. But we look forward to at least unpacking that, figuring out what we might do. Yeah.
All right. Our next slide.
Yeah. Our changes are all personnel, and they come primarily just from step increases. The Job Family Study, you all did for us and made some adjustments to our staff. And so we appreciate that. And we really don't have anything else on the table right now. And I think with respect to the last slide, we've probably addressed most of the things that we talked about in there in terms of, you know, staffing issues and what we're trying to do. So at this point, I'm happy to, and I'm sure you all are ready to finish up, answer any questions that you have. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions?
I'll just.
Our Circuit Court, Mr. DiFranti?
It's only comments. So I've been trying to, trying to, and because they're all follow-up, give mindful time. So I've been trying to track in my mind, and I really need to talk with Ms. Callen and understand afterwards, the sober, the sober living group home has been raised to me. And the question for me is, how does that fit with Virginia Hospital Center Future Peace and CIP and just Capital Improvement Plan? So that's something I'll follow up with. It may not be related, but I want to understand it before I'm pontificating too much in public. And then the sheriff's stuff I am very aware of and grateful for your problem solving together. And I, that will be a priority, you know, we'll see. I don't want to overpromise, but it is certainly on mind. And then on the Drug Court, just because I worked, asked Judge O'Brien, doesn't mean I don't want to know about and understand better the work you've been doing. I've heard great stuff through the Community Criminal Justice Board. Probably I will ask just to have meetings with both of you to, if it's okay, just to understand. And that's the venue in which I'll want to talk about these things. Thanks.
Great. Ms. Cunningham?
It's probably in here, and I just didn't find it, but the number of participants in each of these.
Drug Court.
Yeah.
There's probably 20. It depends on the day. We just graduated two folks last week, but we have four people who have been referred. So we may be 22.
Like across the, across the calendar year, I guess, is how you measure?
I would say 20 to 20. I'd say 22 is a good number.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That it? Okay. Any other questions for Circuit Court? No. All right. I think everybody's.
Just before we go, though, I just wanted to take one minute to say, since Sunday is the International Day of the Woman Judge, I just wanted to let you all know, you may not realize that we have three women chief judges in Arlington, which is the first time that we've had this be the case. So given that Sunday is the International Day of the Woman Judge, I thought it was important to make that point.
That's awesome. Oh, great. Great, great, great. Well, and really appreciate all the work, all the work you guys are doing. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you. And your patience.
Take care. No. You were more patient than we were because you just had to keep waiting. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right. All right, colleagues. I think I'm officially supposed to gavel the meeting to a close here. That's okay. So we're going to be back here in 48 hours, I think, basically, Thursday, March 7 at 3:00 p.m. for a work session on technology services, economic development, and the business improvement districts. And with that, we are adjourned and see you all in, actually, less than 48 hours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.